And I think we've got everybody here. So, welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting. I am Bill Colbrook, Ward 6. Is the clerk ready?
Yes.
I will now call the meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts? Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colbrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
First up on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion?
I'm going to approve those minutes.
A second.
Jared gave the motion. Was that Bill Brown gave the second?
Yeah.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
The minutes are approved. Are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll go on to the next item on the agenda. Is there any presentations tonight? I don't believe so.
Bill?
Yes, go ahead.
Before you start public input, I'd like to say something. Is that okay?
Sure.
I just want to profusely apologize for the language that I used in my frustration with the last meeting and the city council meeting, where I was, could not seem to get on to the meeting. I spent the entire meeting trying to get on and I used some language, profanity that was unprofessional. It was, I'm sure it probably offended a lot of people and I apologize for that. I was extremely frustrated with how the, my Zoom was not working and I spent the entire meeting trying to fix that and it ended up I needed an update. And even after that, I couldn't get on to the meeting. But I was not confused as to how my tools worked. I did not have any tools to mute myself or anything. And unfortunately, my frustration came out in a very vulgar way. And I do apologize to the city council. I apologize profusely to the public that you even had to witness that. So I hope that everyone accepts my apology.
Well, as the Chair of the meeting, I will personally accept your apology. And thank you for that and I hope the public accepts your apology as well. Thank you. So next up on the agenda is the public input. And let me just read a few things before we get to the actual public input. The city takes public comment via email, written format and verbally. On October 12th, 2020, the Urbana City Council approved the new rules for public input during remote electronic meetings. These rules are listed on each agenda for city-sponsored public meetings. Members of the public may join meetings as either a Zoom webinar or telephone participant to make verbal input. This is a time for committee members to listen to the public. Discussion, debate or commentary will not take place during this period. Public comments are limited to four minutes per person. Public input will total no more than one hour unless shortened or extended by majority vote of the members present. The meeting chair has the option of giving priority to speakers who wish to comment on specific agenda items upon which a vote will be taken. A person may speak once during the meeting and may not cede time to another person. We ask that you address your comments to the public body as a whole and maintain respect for the process and respect for members of the council, city staff and the general public. In order to maintain reasonable decorum at a public meeting, the presiding officer of the meeting shall have the authority to raise a point of order and provide a verbal warning to a speaker who uses abusive, harassing, threatening or defamatory language or who engages in disorderly conduct that disrupts, disturbs or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of a meeting. And any member of the public body participating in the meeting also may raise a point of order with the presiding officer and request that they provide a verbal warning to the speaker. If the speaker refuses to cease such remarks or conduct after being warned by the presiding officer, the presiding officer shall have the authority to mute the speaker's microphone and/or video presence at the meeting. The presiding officer will inform the speaker that they may send the remainder of their remarks via email to the public body for inclusion in the meeting record. Thank you for helping us conduct a respectful and productive meeting. So if you would like to speak, please raise your hand. You can do that at the bottom of the screen. Looks like Alan Axelrod is first up. Mr. Axelrod?
Thank you, Bill. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right. So I wanted to bring to the city council's attention that as of the latest communication with the Champaign-Urbana Public Health District, water shut-offs continue. I don't know if I had spoken to you all since we had stopped power shut-offs. I'm a bit disoriented times-wise, but in addition to Ameren Illinois ceasing disconnections on November 18th, we also had the disconnections of Commonwealth Edison, Liberty Utilities, Nicor Gas, North Shore Gas, and possibly one or two others that I can't remember offhand, all unanimously or all included in a blanket moratorium on power shut-offs. However, water shut-offs remain allowed. And of particular concern, there was one power company left off that Governor J.B. Pritzker happens to be directly invested in. I then wanted to segue over to some factual corrections that seem to be misunderstood by people in the council as a whole, which is that the governor does indeed have the ability to stop utility shut-offs. This is basically settled because governors in other states with similar emergency powers have initiated that order. That is why the reporting from Fox News, which you better believe that Governor Pritzker would have pressured them into trying to change the content of the story, just like Ameren Illinois tried to pressure WCIA into not covering the fact that there were thousands of shut-offs in the month of September. These are all things that have happened. So with that part out of the way, the same state statute that provides Governor Pritzker that power also has some particular sections of notes, which I will again read for the benefit of the public record, which is that the Emergency Services and Disaster Agency has the, has several functions, which includes without limitation the temporary restoration of public utility services. And the Emergency Services and Disaster Agency basically has the ability to perform functions within the territorial limits of the political subdivision, but coordination is required by mutual agreement outside of those public, outside of its jurisdiction. It's very clear here. And I want to say that given the factual errors from legal counsel that have occurred, and that's not a disparagement to say that they were factually incorrect statements, even the Illinois Attorney General has made a factually incorrect statement on his November 24th press release insisting by state statute that no utility shut-offs can occur past December 1st, when the state statute says no utility shut-offs shall occur unless, and then it enumerates conditions very similar to the September 22nd moratorium on utility shut-offs for that protection, which basically means yes, they can shut off people had we not won this fourth moratorium from the zero-dollar-all-volunteer grassroots campaign of 50 organizations and counting, spanning from Mauckigan down to Carbondale. So now that I've gotten all of those notes out of the way, I did want to say, at least me personally, I don't mind if y'all curse. I actually think that we should be more inclusive in the way that we conduct business as a city and that means dropping sort of classist natures when it comes to comments and conduct, because it actually is something, maybe counterintuitively, alienating to somebody who may not think that they speak all that well. And so I think it's completely fine, Sharice, sorry, the city council, for mistakes to be made. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next up is Tracy Chong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Tracy Chong from Urbana. So it has been a few weeks now since Chief Seraphin admitted that there was misconduct during the violent arrest of Aleah Lewis, misconduct that was not discovered during Urbana Police Department's internal review. I would like to know if we are ever going to have a discussion on how this oversight happened, what went wrong with the review process and what steps are being done to fix this problem. And by discussion, I don't mean superficial statements like, oh yeah, we have adopted the 10 shared principles, so this will not happen again. Maybe Mayor Marlin, instead of focusing your PR efforts like praising Michael Cervantes, the police officer who threw Lewis to the ground and announcing his award at last city council meeting, we could actually spend time discussing honest reasons for the failures and concrete steps on how UPD failures are being fixed. An apology to the public would be nice too. Or is this matter considered close now and not to be mentioned again? It has been two weeks since I brought up the Taser incident from 2019, where Deputy Chief Sells suppressed video evidence to hide police misconduct. What did you city council members think of his actions? And what did you think after reviewing the Taser incident? Wait, did any of you actually watch the videos? And did you watch the CPRB meeting where all this happened? If each of you heard what happened, especially after UPD has been shown to not be able to correctly perform an internal investigation and didn't bother to look into it, I guess that's really disappointing. And even if you did not believe, the public at least have the initiative to watch it and tell us the public that you disagree. Urbana leadership and the actions of city council and city staff have destroyed any remnants of trust from the public. A few recent incidents have shown that we are still going in the opposite direction of transparency and honesty. During the FOIA presentation on October 5th, city staff once again tried to bring up the burdens of FOIA requests. As usual, Mayor Marlin chimed in, giving a worst-case scenario example to justify all the shenanigans the city had been up to. She described a huge burdensome FOIA request where she actually said, quote-unquote, "It ended up being about 1,400 pages printed and the requested paper copies." Now, Marlin, you have once again been caught in a lie. There's evidence now that the 1,400 pages were provided to the requested via Dropbox. Not sure how you got the information that was printed or why you're telling the public such things. City council members, how can you sit there, sit here, week after week, and trust the city's leadership? The last attempt was to conduct listening sessions for the use of policy updates. However, during the listening sessions, the public's comments were restricted and Urbana's new community engagement coordinator actively muted a resident for mentioning Chief Seraphin's name when describing the Aleah Lewis incident. There was also no youth participants during the youth listening session, probably due to the harsh warnings before anyone even got to speak. It was actually kind of embarrassing to have zero turnout for the youth session after the city made such a big deal about the idea to involve youth. Was any outreach done? If so, was there post-event analysis on why it was such a failure? Did anyone talk to Lamont Peppas about his handling of the situation? Or did you all just pat yourselves on the back for a job well done? Despite these concerns and failures, Mayor Marlin spoke about the event as if it was a great success while reporting to council. This is the very kind of dishonest conversation, especially by city leadership that makes the public so distrustful of the city. Thank you.
Next up is Christopher Hansen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thanks. This is Christopher Hansen from Urbana. I also don't really have a problem with Sharice cursing. I mean, it was, you know, kind of funny, but I think the real issue there was after, you know, the city council had made these rules about public input, you're muting people for uttering much less abrasive statements. I mean, to have one of the council members who voted for those rules kind of violate it, I think that was the issue. And, you know, you guys can curse all you want. The part of that exchange that bothered me is when Sharice said, "I just want to get this over with." To me, that was the vulgar part. That was the part that was not fitting for a public servant. So curse away, but it'd be nice to see some serving of the residents of Urbana at the same time. And kind of on that note, I tried to contact you guys, you know, several times over the weekend, last three days about, you know, the procedural issues of this electoral board hearing earlier today and I really didn't get any reply at all. And kind of as we expected, the hearing was a bit of a circus. My understanding is the participants, especially the candidates in that hearing, really didn't get any indication or very little indication from the city of how it was going to work and they didn't know what they were doing. And I just wonder why we can't have more transparency and more communication to improve those situations. I think a lot of it probably has to do with our city legal department failing in a lot of different ways. And I know no one's going to admit it, but I'm pretty sure the sitting council right now is becoming more and more aware of the extent to which the city's problems are being caused by a failing legal department. I want to echo some of the comments that were said earlier about the previous meeting, the mayor kind of applauding the Urbana Police Department. That's great. I mean, they certainly do good work at times. But I think the issue the public has is there's never an admission or acknowledgement when there's misconduct. And, you know, the Aleah Lewis arrest is a perfect example of that. I mean, you guys had, you know, multiple conversations that, you know, essentially demonstrate her guilt. And then when this issue of misconduct was, you know, an issue that was revealed that, you know, was irrefutable, yeah, Chief Seraphin admitted to it, but kind of in the least public setting possible. And I'm wondering when the city is going to issue some actual statements to the press? Because if you go and Google, say, "Aleah Lewis Urbana arrest", you end up with like several pages of local media reporting that the police department did everything by policy and everything was good. And we know that's not the case and, you know, no one's going to pick up the story after the fact that, you know, it wasn't all good. There was misconduct there. So I think the city is responsible now for correcting all of those erroneous reports. And we still haven't really had any explanation for this issue with James Simon and Kirk Gorman coming up with this illegal scheme to, you know, deny public records requests. And they tried to rob the public of thousands of dollars in fees. And this has been well demonstrated by the Illinois Attorney General. It's irrefutable at this point. And I'm wondering why there's been no, you know, official statement from the city about that, about how that came to be and why and what's been done about it to make sure those kinds of problems don't repeat themselves. And it just, it just seems like everything's such a travesty and I don't understand why it's so hard to admit, oh, we screwed this up, we shouldn't have been doing this, we should be doing better here. I just, I just don't understand it. And I, there was one issue that's been mentioned a few times that bothered me and I, maybe it was a few city council members have said that public input was improving, like it was less contentious lately. And it's not because you guys made new rules. I think it's because people, people don't, people don't have any faith in you anymore. And so they're just kind of giving up and that's bad. You'd much rather have abrasive public input than no trust at all. So think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hansen. The next up is Nathan Sonnenshine.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Nathan Sonnenshine. I am a graduate student in the Library Science Degree Program at the University of Illinois. I have spoken with many of my peers about our housing situations in Champaign-Urbana and the general consensus is that the West Urbana neighborhood is the best area in town. Those of us who live here enjoy not only the narrow tree-lined streets and the neighborhood's proximity to Urbana's downtown, but the mishmash of historic homes that make West Urbana a special, one-of-a-kind place. As such, I am deeply upset that the city is considering permitting CCH and CMH development to demolish almost an entire square block. Because I walk down Oregon Street on my daily trek to work, I have often admired the historic buildings on the site, like the Gamble-roofed stone house with the leaded glass stairway window at 806 West Oregon, the two stately and well-cared-for craftsman-style homes at 805 and 807 West California, and the three handsome brick prairie-style apartment buildings at the corner of Lincoln and California. Replacing these structures with new development runs counter to the goals of the 2005 Comprehensive Plan, which advocates for preserving and enhancing the character of Urbana's established residential neighborhoods. The plan explicitly encourages investing in older properties to help maintain their appearance and long-term potential, not for carelessly demolishing viable existing structures. Furthermore, the Comprehensive Plan states that new development in an established neighborhood will be compatible with the overall urban design and fabric of that neighborhood, which the proposed planned unit development is not. Sloped roofs, facades of different depths and multiple facade materials, which are all features of the proposed apartments, will not magically make the proposed development match the architectural character of the neighborhood. These are all characteristics of the generic vaguely post-modern apartment buildings being constructed en masse in cookie cutter suburbs. The design of the proposed development is an insult to the architectural integrity of nearby structures, both in the neighborhood, like the National Register of Historic Places listed Joseph Royer House across the street on Oregon, and close by on campus, like the Spurlock Museum and the Crane Art Center. New construction should actively contribute to West Urbana's character by drawing from the architectural vocabularies the neighborhood exemplifies, including turn-of-the-century revival styles and late 19th century vernacular construction. Aesthetics aside, their proposed apartments would only slightly increase housing capacity. According to the Principal Planner's Report, the overall density, which is the number of people living on site, would likely be very similar to what exists now, and that's on page 3. To demolish and rebuild most of a block for such minimal returns is not only environmentally irresponsible, but entirely unnecessary, since Champaign-Urbana has no shortage of higher-end student apartments. The glut will increase when current construction projects wrap up, including Gather, Core-Champaign-Daniel and Icon, which will cumulatively have the capacity to house 920 people. These sort of projects are the reason why 30 years ago, the Urbana community made a conscious decision to spare West Urbana from the relentless development that has, for better or worse, completely changed the other neighborhoods near campus. West Urbana's unique historical character means new projects should be carefully vetted and the proposed new apartments are not the sort of architecture that makes the neighborhood appealing to students or to residents. I sincerely ask for all the above reasons that the city council not approve the ordinances for development plans for the planned unit development at 602 South Lincoln Avenue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up with their hand raised is Grace Wilken.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Grace Wilken and I'm an Urbana resident. And it was nice to see some of you listening so intensely when it was a U of I student talking about preserving historic buildings. That was really refreshing to see. Some of you seem to be really deeply listening. I feel like I don't see that as much when it's lifelong residents talking about issues that I find pretty serious, like homelessness, police violence, discrimination, or a whole multitude of issues that really deeply impact us. It sounds like there was, like there's priority for pretty buildings over affordable housing. And I just don't think that's a means to a productive community. So I ask you to please listen to the public and take everyone seriously and address public comment and allow for some accountability so that we can help the city actually run better, because that's what we're all trying to do. There's a lot of interesting agenda items tonight. I have glanced through them all. I don't, haven't dived into all of them. I'm looking forward to learning more. I'm glad to see the One Door Program on the agenda finally. And I ask that you please question how we use our city money and resources and please seek to spend it wisely and as much as possible to directly support the people of Urbana. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Justin Hendricks. Justin?
Can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Justin Michael Hendricks, Champaign, Illinois resident and Urbana resident, Parkland College student, creative hidden home boy activist and currently seeking to make the ballot in Champaign for District 3. As I see, we're having the same issues over here in Urbana with someone going for Ward 5 by the name of Megan McDonald. I will start by saying I understand the risk of losing spaces for lack of black bodies, but at the expense of inexpensive bed sheets is purely unethical and simply outright disgusting. If I knew all you had to do was to sleep with someone and have relations for someone to challenge a petition, I would have did it myself. It already looks concerning.
Mr. Hendricks, Mr. Hendricks, could you keep your comments to council business, please?
It already concerns me when switching individuals are going from one area to another with no concern in the districts or the wards that say it be. I will say this, Meg has been advocating for black and queer to trans people. She has encouraged allyship and worked hard to dismantle racial and political collusions and disparities that we've seen such thus far. It speaks highly to her rapport by being challenged that she is a threat clearly, especially to those who have lost already in a category, but yet needs more recognition in other places elsewhere. I guess someone needs a stroke of their ego. Megan has also followed all rulings and protocols. Nonetheless, one would wait until the last minute to challenge a petition when they had time prior before then. It's a game of checkers, however, we're prepared to play checks. Do better with the agenda, the process, and especially for black bodies, especially protecting black women and our allies like Megan herself. Drop the charges, stop the shut-offs, assist Aleah Lewis, as we've still been asking you all to do, and grant Meg her rightful dues. Also, black housing is important. If you're going to have black housing, make sure it's up to par. Make sure it's black housing that's also equal to those in your white districts and your white counterparts and your white wards. With that being said, thank you very much.
Next up with their hand raised is Clarissa Foreman.
I just jumped on for a second. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, we can.
I just jumped on for a second because I was listening and I caught a part of a comment where you were saying that the person should only speak on city business. I really hope that we encourage public comment because, I mean, it's just such a good part of our community and I've always enjoyed being able to watch, you know, the Urbana City Council meetings and see how you conduct business. So I hope we really are encouraging people to speak and not telling them to only speak on city business. Also, is there a chance that Jared Miller's cat can get sworn in? Because he seemed like the most intent council member on this call. That's cool.
Next up with their hand raised is a person. Hey, Kai, could you identify yourself, please?
Hi, my name is Haki or Drake Matier.
Apologize for mispronouncing your name.
Oh, no, you're good. Thank you, that too. Student at the University of Illinois Community Health. All solidarity and support for Megan. You already know why I'm here. I would like to just speak on certain issues again for you. Aleah Lewis dropped the charges. But I'm here to also discuss certain policies and implementations. I'm currently in the police listening session for Champaign Police Department. And basically what I'm telling them is what I'm here to tell you, that there has to be a form of depowerment from police and those, from the police, so that individuals in the community can actively be involved with the rehabilitation and transformative justices of individuals. A lot of people say defund the police. I would like to say depower the police and abolish the police, but I understand that that does not happen tomorrow in the next year or two. I understand that it is a process. However, that process is imminent and I would love for you all to understand that that process is imminent. The United Kingdom, the Empire of Great Britain, that failed. The Empire of Napoleon, that failed. The Tsar in Russia, that failed. Dynasties in China have fallen. One day, the Empire of America will come to an end. When will that come? I don't know. But we are past the part, past the process of de-escalation. So all of this is happening. So officers have to actively ask themselves, are they willing to remove and reduce responsibility and power in certain situations? But I will tell you where defunding the police comes. There needs to be an account for crisis that the city can actively give to individuals that are in these crises situations. Domestic violence, homelessness. There needs to be a way that we can give resources to individuals on a targeted basis, just like these officers were talking about regarding certain individuals. You know who makes the calls. You know what households you report to when it comes to domestic violence calls. Not every household is dealing with that. You know exactly which households there is where there is a domestic violence situation. Where there is a domestic violence situation. These are repeat calls. Cook County is number four in the state of Illinois for domestic violence rates. You all know who these individuals are. You also know who homeless individuals are. And the reason why you know them is because that's what the system has done, is instead of saying Black people, now you have people that can be constantly under watch and security, quote-unquote, "security" of you all. You all know the homeless individuals. You all know Richie Turner. Everyone knew Richie Turner before he was killed and attacked by officers. Did you show up with water? Did you show up with snacks? Did you show up with blankets? Sometimes officers have to educate and ask themselves and question some of the stuff that they are told to do. But we are in very special times, and we are also in a very special place regarding politics, that local politics basically runs everything. That's why I stand in solidarity with Megan, before I stand in solidarity with any president, with any other person, especially as it comes to Urbana, all praise and solidarity, because she's been out here with us, single-handedly putting the fight against Julia Reese for Leah Lewis. So I stand in solidarity with her, running, in solidarity with them, running for a local government. And local government is where a lot of this stuff can change. So again, officers need to ask themselves, where can they remove responsibility? And if they're even willing to remove that responsibility, you can't tell me any good officer until he or she, them, actively tells me that they are willing to lose power. Thank you. Megan McDonald, all the way.
The next up is Rita. Rita, can you identify yourself for the record, please? Rita, you're now unmuted. Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Sure. My name's Rita Connery. I reside in Champaign-Urbana. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So again, Rita Connery. I reside in Champaign, and I am calling today. I'm not really prepared with my statement, however, I just have a few things that I'd like to note. Followers and leaders, chiefs and Indians, Diane and the City Council. Do we see a trend here? Diane, we know that you hold the power here at Urbana City Council. I can't believe I'm saying it, but I'd like to thank you for recusing yourself today, to not sit on the Electoral Board, to allow citizens a fair chance at having their names placed on the ballot. I am here, and I stand in support of Megan McDonald in Ward 5, and I agree that it is ridiculous that we are challenging petitions of activists who have been actively engaged in the community, with its constituents, with homeless people, with LGBT queer. I am just baffled as to why you would be so intimidated by she is a low-income white woman. Her running mate, I'm not sure too much about her, but to my understanding, it is her bedmate that challenged Megan's petition. And please, Bill, don't cut me off. I am speaking as it relates to city business, and it is discouraging when you cut off petitioners from speaking thoroughly and articulating what it is that they want to say. You are a citizen. You are a City Council rep. You are supposed to embrace each of your citizens that call in to speak as it relates to anything that they want to talk about concerning Urbana. I am concerned with the poor leadership, the unethical practices, and the refusal to follow policies by all of the staff here, with the exception of Jared Miller. And Jared, I do want to thank you for your service and for listening to the citizens, not only in your district, but within Champaign-Urbana. I am going to end with, I hope that you guys support Black women, protect Black women, and drop charges against the Leah Lewis. I am also going to ask that you continue to support the no Amrin shut-offs, the rent moratoriums, and the no water shut-offs. Please, please, I am begging you. Allow our citizens, who have been intentional, to collect signatures, to run for a seat on City Council. Allow them the opportunity to do so. Allow the people in those districts to select whom they feel is most fit to sit and serve as a City Council member for their district. I hope that each of you have a great evening. I'm hoping that tomorrow, at the Electoral Ballot Hearing, that it is a little more organized. Today was a cluster mess of confusion. It was like a circus. No one knew what they were talking about. And it would be advisable to have a city attorney who was a little more knowledgeable on electoral hearings and that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. I see no other hands raised, so without public input is now closed. Next up on the agenda is a staff report. Is there a staff report?
Yes, I have a really quick staff report tonight. I just wanted to give a little summary of what we usually have some folks from Public Works come and give a little overview of our plans for snow at this time of year. But given the level of commitment everybody has in other areas, I thought I'd just give a little overview and direct folks, if they want more information, if you go to the city's website and just search on snow, the first thing that will pop up in the search is called "In the Know About Snow," and that's our page. And you can find a slide deck and frequently asked questions about snow. But just to let people know, what we typically do is that we treat, if we're expecting less than two inches of snow, we will put down a treatment as appropriate prior to the event. We begin plowing if the event exceeds two inches, and we prioritize high-volume arterials, the downtown and Philo Road business districts and parking lots, and then we get to residential areas. And we have sixteen residential zones that we plow, and they're on a rotating basis in terms of priorities. So you can find out in the frequently asked questions what areas are the priority areas this year, and there's a map that shows you all the neighborhoods and their numbers. Now typically, when we're plowing snow, we'll have twelve snowfighters per twelve-hour period, and we hope this year that we'll be able to staff at that level. But COVID is challenging us every day, so we're working hard to make sure that we can stay fully staffed. But if we cannot, then we will fall behind our usual standard of being able to clear, you know, most of the major roads and stuff within 24 hours. So just a couple of other things I wanted to share. We have six new plow trucks this year. We limped through last year with trucks that were over twelve years old, and the mechanics did a fantastic job. But we were really holding it together, and we have a new fleet of six trucks. They're orange. And you'll see them out there. They're very exciting in terms of the mechanical devices on them. So special training had to be done just to learn how to operate it. And the other good news, besides having a new fleet of trucks, is that salt prices have stabilized. Last year, we had to pay $106 a ton, and this year, salt prices are back down to $46 a ton. So just wanted to hit a few highlights and let you get on with your business. But if anybody has any questions, Vince Gustafson encourages you to give them a call.
Does he have any questions for Carol? Jared Miller?
Girl, I was just curious, do we know if their crews are going to try and get out here in the next week or two to hit some of the heavy pothole spots that have been cropping up around town? I know I've been seeing a few, especially on Vine Street, that have gotten pretty big in the last couple of weeks. And I know that that's really bad for plows, if they're running into them over and over again, as they're going through a plow session. I just didn't know if we were going to outtry and get some passion done.
I know that they're working hard. Tim just popped in, so since I'm not the interim director of Public Works anymore, I don't have any specific information on that. If Tim wants to unmute, then he may. Otherwise, I'll get you more information on the specifics tomorrow. Tim, did you know any more specifics about that?
I don't know any more specifics. I know we're basically trying to get prepped up for that. The new snow piles and stuff have been the priority of getting all the mechanics and everything calibrated on that before snow season. But the streets crews are still hitting it hard. I will check in on that, though, and try to provide some additional insight for you guys next meeting.
Thank you.
Dennis Roberts?
Yeah, thanks for that update, Carol. Also, some people might want to know some of the parameters around required snow shoveling of sidewalks. Do you have any information yet, or do you want to bring that to us maybe in a week or two?
Well, in that same vein, we do have areas where certain areas in the city, and I'll make a note of, I don't have the page, but if you were to search on sidewalks, no removal, you would find the zones, and we actually expanded the zones about a year ago. The responsibility is, I believe if there's more than two inches of snow, that in these areas, the adjacent private property owner has to shovel the sidewalk. Otherwise, the city can do it on their behalf and then charge them for it. That's been a challenge for us, because all of our crews are working plowing. So for us to get a crew out to shovel a sidewalk has been challenging. But I can deliver some more specific information next week, if you like.
Sure, because I think a lot of people will be wondering about it only probably after the first big snowfall, but always good to have the knowledge ahead of time.
Okay, thanks for the reminder.
We don't want that snowfall right away either, by the way.
No, I'm more than happy to wait.
Mayor? You're muted, ma'am.
What Carol forgot to mention is that the blades on the trucks are blue, so we have orange and blue plow trucks serving the city of Urbana, which I think is great. So I wanted to give you a bit of an update on COVID-related items. A whole lot's in the works right now. I've been on probably four or five conference calls and Zoom meetings in the last week or so on vaccine distribution with the Governor's Office, Department of Public Health, and then local officials. We know it'll be phased in. We know that some doses will start arriving in the community next week. We're fairly certain, and we're certain that the first round of vaccinations will go to the healthcare facilities, so the hospitals, clinics, et cetera, and to the long-term care facilities. And they will focus on getting everybody in those facilities vaccinated, not just the medical personnel, but all the support staff and services along with it. The next phases after that are still being determined. But what we, as a community, do, and especially council members can do, and the community members, is to become vaccine ambassadors. And that was a term that the Department of Public Health has started using. But there's a lot of uncertainty. There's some confusion. There's some fear out there about this vaccine. And unless we get about 80% of the population vaccinated, we are going to not have the level of immunity that we need in our community to start to transition to at least more normal way of life compared to what we're in right now. So we're looking, and I'm starting to talk with people about getting this message out to the community. I also asked Dr. Ezek at the state level to distill into five to 10 talking points what we can provide to the public that's accurate information that answers and addresses some of those concerns. So if you want to become a vaccine ambassador in this community, contact me, call my office, or shoot me an email. And I want to start compiling information and getting that information out to the community. We also met about a couple weeks ago with the Governor's Office and Public Health Department, state level, and it was a group of bipartisan legislators, the local mayors, and the public health district. And we stressed how important it was for the turnaround times at Marketplace to get back to where they were, you know, the summer, when you could get your results back 24 to 48 hours. This fall, they had just gotten longer and longer, and it was taking five, six, seven days to get results back. And when it's that big of a lag between a test and getting a result, it's pretty much worthless in terms of contact tracing. So I'm happy to say that they've changed their processes. They have an online app. The turnaround time is now, the last few days, has been quite good. I went to Marketplace yesterday at 2:00 and got my results back at 3:00 today. So apparently, it was a question of shifting, allocating lab capacity better so that certain labs weren't jammed up with tests. And we're hopeful that this trend will continue. We also met with Councilor Jones and his team today, and got an update on the S.H.I.E.L.D. CU, which is the community-based saliva test opportunity. And still not a lot of details available yet, but they're working very hard to work in this direction. And they asked for input on really a strategic use of the saliva test in the community. It's not going to be available for every single person in the community, but it will be available for those who need it the most. And so that's what the kinds of things that we're trying to identify now. And in the meantime, of course, wearing masks and distancing and everything you've been doing, please continue that. Some new metrics came out today, and Champaign County had the best in the state. And that's attributable to what we, as a community, are doing. Finally, I just wanted to make a brief comment about, we've got several comments about the Electoral Board. I can't say much in detail because it involves the race I'm in. But I will say, in general, from the perspective of the city planning, as you probably heard this afternoon, it's been probably over 20 years since there were petition challenges in Urbana. There was one at the township about eight years ago, but the City Council, mayor's races just didn't have petition challenges. Because of that, there were no records in the city for how this was done. There was nothing whatsoever as far as guidance. There was no institutional knowledge, or actually anybody here with experience in putting together these boards and running the process. And the other thing that you're dealing with is, the challenges come in, and then you're expected to turn around within three or four days and have the complete process underway. So very short timelines. We worked as hard as we could. We worked through the weekend. We had a really good plan in place, actually, and the intent was to have fair, impartial hearings, to give everyone a chance to be heard and to be understood. Things were changing constantly, all the way through last night, up until about 8:00. And we were very fortunate to have a hearing officer and engage an attorney who's a specialist in election law. And I understand she has actually taught election law at the U of I. So everything was in place. And then, you know, unexpectedly, something happened, and court order didn't come through, and all our plans were just thrown off the rails. And it's kind of, well, it's kind of like 2020 has been. So we're back on track. I'm pleased to report, things will start at 9:00 in the morning to be convened, and then cases will be heard at 5:30 tomorrow night. So I apologize for the confusion. So I apologize for the confusion. We have done the very best we could. We basically had to create this process from scratch. And I can assure you that, that we are going to put together a manual so that the next time this happens, people at least will have something to go on to get the process started. And it's, it's a specialized field. So you do need outside, you do need outside legal help when you don't have that particular specialty on your staff. So thanks for your patience, and thank you for the people serving on the board and for those participating in the process. And that's all I got.
Bill Brown.
Yeah, I just had a question on the vaccine distribution. A few people have asked whether, if they had the, had COVID and recovered in the last few months, if they should, you know, still get the vaccine, or if they should, especially this first batch, it's going to be pretty high demand. Would it be better if they waited? Have you heard anything from Dr. Ezek or anyone else about what they're recommending?
Based on what I've heard, they are recommending that people get it anyway because they just don't know how long the immunity will last.
Okay.
And it is a two-part vaccination. So depending on which brand you get, it's either three weeks or four weeks between the two shots, which means that just adds to the logistical challenge. You know, you gotta, you gotta give it first time around, and then you gotta find, make sure the person comes back for the second dose. And that's, again, a reason to have the messaging that we need out there so people know what to expect.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Sheree's.
Oops, sorry.
No, Mayor, I guess the question I have also is regarding insurance issues and getting the vaccination. Are uninsured, how, how are we going to deal with the uninsured?
Vaccine, as I, as I've been told, is going to be free.
Okay, so it's just a matter of as each tier of?
Yeah, yeah. It's a tiered, yeah, it's a tiered approach, and it will be months. It'll be months before, you know, the community is, is, everyone in the community has access to it. But they will be prioritizing, and we don't know exactly what those priorities will look like yet.
Okay, so, because I was going to say, is this something like people have to get on a list, sign up, register?
All that will be coming, but not from me tonight. They're, they're still, they're still working out all the details. It's, it's a logistical challenge, yeah. But we're gonna do it. There's light at the end of the tunnel.
Okay.
Any other council members have questions for the mayor? Does that conclude your comments, Mayor?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up on the agenda is ordinance number 2020-12-068, and ordinance ratifying emergency order 20-11, temporary ban on, of on-premises indoor consumption of food and beverages to include alcoholic liquor within the city of Urbana, corporate city limits. And the mayor, I think, is going to speak on this.
Sure, there's a couple of ratifications on the agenda tonight. The first one is on the indoor consumption of food and beverages, which covers the indoor dining, event centers, and that sort of thing. This was, this order was issued at the request of the Champagne-Urbana Public Health District due to the, to help prevent the spread of COVID in bars and restaurants particularly, but also, you know, large event centers, hotels, and that sort of thing. So the enforcement really of this indoor, and this reflects the Tier 3 mitigation that we're in right now from the state level. So the enforcement lies with the Public Health District and the potential loss of their license, their food, their health, public health license. And the, the process is a multi-stage process. You get, you get a heads-up letter, you get a warning letter, you get, you, people have an opportunity to comply. But if they refuse to comply and continue with the indoor service of food and beverages, they risk losing their license, and that means they're shut down. So there's no end date on this. Basically, we don't know, it, it's another question of we don't know how long it needs to be in place, but it will be in place until the, probably until the Public Health District advises us not to, or until we move into a different tier or a different level of mitigation. But if you wanted to put an end date on it, I would recommend like March 31st, which is when the end date for, I think, the public events suspension, suspension of public events was, was done. That would just make it easier to keep track of things. But, but this is one of those open-ended things. We just don't know what the course of the virus will be and how we'll do. If we continue on the trend that we're on, we, we may be able to lift this sooner rather than later. But at this point, we just don't know. And I'll just talk about the second item, too, and then you can discuss. The second item was an emergency order ratifying financial relief from the Champagne-Urbana Sanitary Health, Sanitary District. So this authorizes expenditure of up to $26,000 in write-offs to customers who have past due bills at the Sanitary District. And the customers who will qualify for this financial assistance are those who are eligible for the LIHEAP, the low-income heap in utility assistance. City of Champagne, I believe, authorized a little over $50,000 for the same purpose. But this is a, you know, it's, it's a good program offered by the Sanitary District to help provide a little more financial relief on utilities.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion for the first ordinance? Mary Alice?
Can I ask a question, Bill?
Sure.
So the duration of the emergency order, it says that it expires on the date of Tier 3 guidelines are suspended or terminated? That, that, so there is a termination date, it's just following the governor's tiered system?
Correct, yeah. It just doesn't have a, it's not a, you know, date, time, and, and, you know, day and month.
But this basically would be voided if, as long as we went from Tier 3 guidelines are suspended in either direction, right? So you go to Tier 2 or Tier 4? That's what it says. So should that be rewritten so that it is Tier 3 or lower?
I'm not even sure what Tier 4 will look like. Tier 3 guidelines are suspended or terminated.
Because it just says that Tier 3 is no longer in place, so it could be higher or lower.
Okay, we can, we can make that more specific for the final, if you want to send this, you know, we can send it to council for next week, or you can amend it right now if you wanted to suggest something, sure.
It can be, it can be, if, if council agrees, it can just be rectified for a city council. I just noticed that when I was looking at for the date there, that it would be automatically null and void for an enter 3.
Good catch, okay.
Can we have a motion now?
I'll move that we send with a recommendation for approval pending the changes in the enforcement timeline. Ordinance number 2020-12-068, and ordinance ratifying emergency order 2011, temporary ban on premise indoor consumption of food and beverage to include alcoholic liquor within the city of Urbana, corporate limits. To city council with a recommendation for approval. A second?
Is there a second? Okay, Mary Alice had the motion, Sheree's had the second. Any discussion? Seeing no hands raised, clerk, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, with that, the, that ordinance passes to go on to the full city council. As the mayor had mentioned, the next up on the agenda is ordinance number 2020-12-069, and ordinance ratifying emergency order 20-12, authorizing participation in the Urbana and Champagne Sanitary District COVID-19-related financial assistance program regarding sanitary sewer and stormwater utility bills. Jared?
I have two questions. One, where did the $50 cap come from? And where did the total cap, $28,320.52, come from?
Um, I believe the cap was, Carol, can you answer that?
Deb Brinkman reached out, and she said, Merry Christmas, hope you had a good time.
Okay. That, that was what was suggested to us. The program was, was suggested to us by the Sanitary District, and those limits were proposed to us. So we, we, we just agreed with what was being proposed. So that's where it came from. Oh, Elizabeth is now.
Well, I could add one thing, that the total cap is about 1% of the revenue that they collect for us on an annual basis.
Did, was there any discussion with them that, I mean, it just reads almost like an intergovernmental agreement to me. So I presume, which I'm going to do about lobbying for increasing these amounts, if we, council were to support that, what, what would happen? Would we have to go back to them and be like, well, council, like, council actually said that they would like it to be $60, and for the limit to be raised to $50,000. But what happens then? Or is this a take-it-or-leave-it situation?
I don't think it's a take-it-or-leave-it situation, but I think that changing any of the limits does impact the sanitary district's revenue also. Is that right, Elizabeth?
I honestly would, would have to give that some thought. So I think they proposed this in a way that was coordinated. So the Sanitary District collects certain revenues on behalf of the city, and I think it was all sort of proportional, right? So that we might give up, you know, we might lose 1% of our revenue, and they might lose 1% of their revenue. So it, it might, in fact, complicate things on their side. But they're the ones who are doing the work here, we're not.
We al, we also have other options for providing financial relief or other sources of funds as well. This one would be, I, I think this one, we're not sure what, how much flexibility is there in this particular one.
We can check into it for next week, if you like. I mean, and it's possible that Rick Manor or somebody from the Sanitary District could be here as well.
Yeah, I, I just would be interested to hear where, because I presumed reading it that that's where the numbers came from, whether it was not something we came up with, that it was something they came up with.
Right.
Where they arrived, where they arrived at that. I mean, my, my bill, you know, it's quarterly that we get, it's usually about 40-something dollars. I don't know if that's typical or not, just based on my house and my water usage, I guess. So, you know, if somebody's been struggling throughout the entire amount of COVID to do this, you know, I can easily see somebody's individual bill being, or amount owed being well over $100. So that's, I'm curious why it'd be limited to 50 bucks for, for people, and I'd really like to advocate for more.
Mary Alice?
Since we're asking for additional information, I think some basic information would be helpful, such as the median cost of the bill and roughly the number of people who are behind in our, in our area.
We can get all that. Rick is very conversant in all those things, so happy to get that.
Bill Brown.
Also, do they also collect our recycling fees?
They, they do also collect our recycling fees, but that wasn't part of what they proposed to us here.
I wonder if, I mean, if people are behind on one, they're probably behind on the other, I don't.
It's, it's possible. I, I would think that might make it even more complicated for them to administer the program, but we could inquire.
And then for the qualifications, it said that residents qualify for assistance under income standards applicable to the C, their PC, low-income LIHEAP program. So they, it sounds like there would be a separate process for income determination, not using the LIHEAP determination, because it says, under the income standards. It doesn't say they have to qualify for LIHEAP. Am I reading that correctly? It's a little, it's, it's a little vague. I just, I'm a little concerned if they have to qualify for LIHEAP. There is also the social security number standard, and as a community of a lot of international people here that don't have social security numbers, I'd hope there'd be a way that we could waive that requirement.
We'll get you the answer to that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Dennis Roberts.
So we don't have all the answers yet, but we think that, I have a feeling that we believe that intent is really important and useful to the community. This is the first time I've heard of the, of the Sanitary District stepping up and helping with utility issues similar to what we've been advocating for the power company and the water company. So what I would recommend is that we advance this to the city council with, without making, necessarily making an approval, but waiting for more information, but that we move this forward because I think it's going to be a real positive program for the community. And the details, maybe within the week, we can have answers. So, you know, I could make that motion.
I'll, I'll second the motion. Is that a motion with no recommendation?
Yes, with no recommendation at this time.
I'd second that.
Okay, so we got a motion from Dennis Roberts advancing this to city council with no recommendation, and Jared Miller has seconded it. Is there any other discussion? Jared Miller?
Just if it isn't, isn't clear, I'll just say again, you know, if we're going to reach out to them, you know, knowing that we'd like to, I don't know, understand the reasoning behind it and also what their flexibility is and what they'd be willing to do. Otherwise, again, you know, I, I just know that bills can be, could have been piling up for folks. And, you know, if you're getting a quarterly $40 to $50 bill, you know, give you $150. Bill made a great, Bill Brown made a great point about also tying in the recycling fee to that as well. If that's doable, maybe we can do that in another, another emergency order if it's just too complicated for this one. But I'd also like to see us taking whatever advocacy we can to do and help out our residents who may be struggling with pain utilities, no matter what they, no matter what they are.
I've got a question.
Actually, Sheree's had her hand up as well.
So Jared kind of covered it.
Okay, Dennis, you're up then.
So being a homeowner, I know I receive my, my bill, I think it's every other, every other month, or every three months, I can't remember which. If you're in an apartment, does the payment of this fee rely upon the property owner rather than the tenant? Do we know that, how that's figured out? I think the mayor.
Mayor?
Well, I can tell you as a landlord for 40 years in this town, the, things like, for us anyway, the recycling tax, the sewer fee, those smaller types of bills were incorporated into the rent, and our tenants usually did not pay those individually. But I can't speak for the rest, you know, other landlords, but many times that's folded into the rent.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too. And so there might, so the most, the most at-risk people who are probably not homeowners, I mean, I can't say, but who probably in apartments and renting, may not be so adversely affected by this. And so we may find that, that what they're offering is going to be adequate for the experience. But it might be nice to know if, if it depends entirely upon contracts, you know, with, with your landlord. So, I mean, it's just a thought about, you know, how, how damaging this, you know, the sewer bills are to individuals in the community, when we have a lot of people who are, you know, apartment dwellers.
Well, there are a lot of people struggling in, in single-family homes. in single-family homes too. So I think it would be, you know, this is good relief. Just a question of how much.
Any other questions or comments before we go to a roll call? Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, with that, that passes. That goes on to the full city council with no recommendation, because we need more information. Next up on the agenda is ordinance number 2020-12-070, an ordinance approving the preliminary development plan for a planned unit development, which is 602 South Lincoln Avenue from CCH Development LLC and CMH Development LLC. The plan case is 2411 PUD 20. Community development, Laura Kirsten, Kevin Garcia.
Good evening. It's good to see you all. I feel like it's been a little while. So this is a proposal for preliminary and final approval of a planned unit development. I want to point out, before I get into the whole presentation, that since this proposal is within the Lincoln-Bucy corridor, if these ordinances are approved by city council, these plans would also need to be reviewed by the development review board. So things like facade materials or, you know, character-defining design traits would be reviewed by the designer review board as well for consistency with the guidelines for that corridor. Let me share my screen here. So this site is Lincoln Avenue. It is directly across from the Alice Campbell Alumni Center. And whoops, my cursor, sorry about that. So it takes up this half-block that's bounded by California Avenue, Lincoln Avenue, and Oregon Street. It's approximately 1 and 1/4 acres, and it's made up of 10 parcels. The zoning of these properties is split between R4, which is our medium-density multifamily residential, so that allows residential up to apartments. And then R7, which is university residential, which allows things like dorms, rooming houses, fraternities, and sororities. So focused on student housing. The proposed development, let's see. The proposed development is, it's five apartment buildings. So, let's see. Well, I can't get my cursor to work very well. So it's five apartment buildings. Each of them is about 2 and 1/2, or between 2 and 1/2 to 3 stories tall. It's in sort of this U shape around this central parking area. There's, some of the parking is covered. It's under, it's located under the buildings. It's all kind of tucked away on the interior of the site. There's also covered bike parking as well, as well as some uncovered bike parking. The non-covered car parking spaces are proposed to be permeable pavement, so that would help with stormwater infiltration. The mix of units in these apartments would be, it'd be 70 single-bedroom and studio apartments. The buildings would be set back roughly 25 feet from the right-of-way on each side of the street. And we pull up some elevations. So the design incorporates pitched roofs to sort of match with the architectural character of the surrounding neighborhood. There are certain elements to make the buildings look smaller than, or less massive than they are. So setting the buildings back further helps with that. Having facades that are at multiple depths helps sort of break up the massing, using multiple facade materials and colors, and having varied building heights all sort of help to make the buildings look smaller than they are. There are several mature trees on the site, which I've identified the ones that are actually on the site here. Some of these are, some of the trees on this landscape planner in the right-of-way. So the architects designed this, designed the site to sort of work around the existing mature trees on the site, so they can preserve those if this is approved. Automobile access would come just from one driveway on the north off of California Avenue. So that would remove five existing driveways that are on, spread out. Or currently, there are six driveways spread out on each of the roads. So it would bring it down to one. Also, one thing to note is, so the sidewalk on the western side of the, of the, sorry, the sidewalk along Lincoln Avenue, the developer has agreed to relocate that sidewalk onto the site and grant an easement to the public so that they can use the sidewalk. And that would really be beneficial to move that sidewalk off of Lincoln Avenue, which I'll show a picture of what that looks like right now. The sidewalk is a couple feet off of Lincoln Avenue. It's not very pleasant to walk along. It's four feet wide. So to move that sidewalk off of Lincoln Avenue and widen it at the developer's expense would be a benefit to the city and would certainly increase the comfort of people walking along that stretch of Lincoln Avenue. Apologize if you hear a crying baby in the background. I think that's just sort of a new normal thing for the Zoom era we live in. Okay. With respect to the comprehensive plan, these parcels are listed as, sorry, got to scroll back up to it. I've outsmarted myself. I had actually put it next slide down. Sorry about that. Okay, so with respect to the comprehensive plan, these, this is a mixture of medium-density residential and university residential. Neither of those terms are defined in the plan, but there is a note about the Lincoln-Bucy corridor that says, "Preserve these uses as they now exist while precluding further encroachment of higher-density buildings into this unique residential area." Now, conservatively, we estimate that 65 people could currently live on the site. The proposed development is for 70 single-bedroom and studio apartments. So really, the overall density would be quite similar to what exists now. So it would be preserving sort of the, you know, the density that exists on the site. The, let's see. Also, I wanted to point out that in the Lincoln-Bucy design guidelines, which were, they were recommended by the comprehensive plan, and they were adopted in 2009. In those design guidelines, this area, which I've highlighted on the map on the right side, is all identified as being in Zone 1, which is the Lincoln Avenue and higher-intensity areas. So it says, I won't read all of the highlighted stuff, but it says, "Due to the higher-intensity nature of Zone 1 and the need for new development to be compatible, projects proposed in Zone 1 may be of a larger scale than those proposed in Zone 2." So I just wanted to highlight this, to point out that these guidelines, which, as I said, were a recommendation of the comprehensive plan, identify this block as being higher intensity. Okay. With respect to the, so the zoning ordinance lays out nine different goals that planned unit development should be reviewed against. And I won't go through each of these. They're detailed in your memo. But this, the proposal is generally consistent with seven out of those nine, of those nine goals. So the development would meet all development regulations, like parking setbacks, open space, height, et cetera, except for the aforementioned floor-area ratio, which they're requesting a waiver for. The zoning ordinance allows for a maximum floor-area ratio of 0.5 in both the R4 and R7 zoning districts. In R4, you can increase the floor-area ratio to 0.7 if you have a larger site and/or larger units in your buildings. The requested floor-area ratio of 0.76 is between what's allowed in the underlying zoning districts by right and what would be allowed in the R5 zoning district, which would be, if you were rezoning and wanted a little higher density, you would request to rezone to R5, which is one step up from R4. Really, the purpose of floor-area ratio is to limit the mass and the scale of buildings and, relatedly, the intensity of the use on the site. So how many people could live there in a residential, you know, in our residential use. The proposed development, as I mentioned, includes design elements to sort of make the buildings appear smaller. So while floor-area ratio tries to limit mass and scale so buildings don't appear really large, there are things that you can do to make the buildings not appear so large. And as I said, they've incorporated elements to do that in this case. And as for the intensity of the use, since about the same amount of people could live there as currently live there, the intensity would be about the same. So it really seems reasonable to allow a waiver to increase the floor-area ratio in this case. I won't go through, for the sake of time, I won't go through all of the criteria for approval for a planned unit development. These are in your staff memo. But I do want to point out that the plan commission found that the proposal met all of the criteria for approval. Just to summarize the plan commission hearings, plan commission had two hearings on these requests. One was on November 5th, and one was on November 24th at a special meeting. We received 20 emails and letters in opposition to the requests and one letter in support. And at the public hearings, four people spoke in favor and three people spoke against the requests. Some of the concerns, excuse me, some of the concerns that were raised were about the waiver request to allow a higher floor-area ratio, some concerns about the compatibility of the design with the surrounding neighborhood, property values, parking, traffic, and just in general, the amount of time that people had to review the proposal. Plan commission, after a discussion, they decided to continue that case to allow staff some more time to address some questions that were raised during the meeting, to address some of those concerns of the people that raised them. So then, November 24th, at the special meeting, we addressed those questions and concerns from the previous meeting. Specifically, we answered what would be allowed by right under the existing zoning. We discussed traffic volume and safety, the proposal to relocate and widen the sidewalk by the developer. We also clarified, as I said at the beginning, that if this proposal is approved, it would require review by the designer review board, which would be an opportunity to address some of the concerns over the character of the building and such. So after that discussion on the 24th, plan commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of both requests. And so their recommendation was to have three conditions. One is that construction be in general conformance with the attached site plan and elevation, subject to modifications that may be required by the designer review board. Two is that the sidewalk along Lincoln Avenue be reconstructed further to the east on the applicant's property and at their expense, and that the applicant provides an access easement to allow the use by the public. And three, that a plan for tree protection be implemented during demolition and construction in coordination with the city's landscape supervisor. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to take any questions. I know that the, I think the architects are on the call as well, so they should be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions, Kevin or the architects? Mary Alice?
Yeah, there's been some conversation, and you highlighted that they are planning to maintain some of the mature trees. And I know that at the plan commission that they had said that they hadn't had anybody out there to look at them. Is there any confirmation in terms of what trees that they plan to retain?
Well, so on the landscape, the preliminary landscape plan that they had submitted, I had highlighted the trees that they had identified for preservation. But as far as I know, they haven't, they haven't had the landscape surveyor out yet. But that's, my news is as of the plan commission hearing. So perhaps we can ask them if they have talked to him yet.
Dennis? You're muted.
Thanks, thank you. I observed the plan commission's second meeting when they summarized the case and forwarded it to us this afternoon. So it's pretty fresh in my mind. I have a couple other questions, maybe, but I'll start with the one about the trees. We're, I would say that I am pleased that these people have taken into consideration that mature trees on this lot are worthy of saving, and they don't have a plan of clear-cutting the lot just for their convenience during the construction phase, which we've seen in so many other projects that have been built in our community to the loss of a lot of trees, which is a shame in a tree-city-oriented community like our own. The question did come up by one of the members of the planning commission, whether the arborist had evaluated the trees. And I would say that, don't worry about evaluating them. It'd be like saying, "Well, I don't like brown trees, but I like orange trees, and only red trees can exist here." I think that any mature tree that provides shade is a valuable tree, whether it's considered A1 tree, A number 1, or A number 2, or a type B tree. So I'm hoping that the arborist is not going to come over to that site and say, "Well, we're going to cut down three trees because they just aren't the prime trees for our community." Because I think all trees who contribute to the community. There were other parts of the discussion I thought were pretty interesting. The various amenities that were being offered that assist in the ecology or the sustainability aspects, goals of the community. Some of them have to do with charging stations for future use of electronic vehicles, if they became popular, and apparatuses that would be possible to install, you know, in the parking areas, the use of permeable pavements, and some other items that they offered to us. So there were quite a few things that I thought met the general goals of the city council and the community at large. Finally, you know, is it worth, is it valid to tear down? Finally, you know, is it worth, is it valid to tear down existing houses which, you know, are part of the community and have some historic value due to their age and their, their familiarity to our community? So this is like probably one of the harder issues to address. I think that because of this particular corridor which faces Lincoln Avenue and also is probably one of the few places along Lincoln Avenue that new construction can occur to enhance and maybe improve the quality generally of the avenue and its resources in, to the community as far as residential units. We have to sort of accept and expect that change will occur on the Lincoln Avenue corridor. And you did point out that this was one of the sections that was designated as the, the a priority one area, which one could expect to have additional construction or new construction as a high intensity area. So there's been a lot of concern about the, the Urbana, the West Urbana neighborhood and preserving the quality of that neighborhood. And I understand that completely and I really get it. But, you know, we're also going to be looking at, I don't know, just really improving the general quality of housing in the, in the city and upgrading, especially along the main arterial areas. And we're going to have to expect, expect that there'll be some changes occurring. If, if there were, if, if I thought that this project was really incompatible or really overly large, or hadn't had some, at least some design consideration using mass and gable to try to accommodate the size of the buildings that are there now and adjacent to it, I would be more concerned, but I think that the, the planners have really tried to take that into consideration. The one thing that, that I would like to see is more surety about the quality of the construction materials that they're, they're going to propose and how that reflects the intent of the preservation aspect of the BUC corridor. So the fact that it's going to go to a Design Review Board is extremely important to me, so that I know that, that, that the community will have a chance to have a voice in that and also that the Design Review Board will actually have a chance to put input into it. And I, I say this because a, a development in my own ward on Vine Street didn't really get the review of a Design Review Board. We don't have that in East Urbana. We haven't established that here, even though we do have Design Review Guidelines for some of the buildings closer to the interior of our, of my ward on, on East Green Street. And so we've gotten in East Urbana, a project that on the outside looks pretty good. The brick surfaces are pretty nice. But if you go on the inside, the materials were actually sort of downgraded just before we started, they started construction. There was a, a Design Review which changed the, the materials that were used on the interior of the court, you know, on that site in, in East Urbana, to the effect that it does not match the exterior really in any way as far as the quality. And, and if you look on the outside of the, of the, the construction, it looks pretty good. It's got a shell that looks handsome and, and matches the courtyard, I mean, the, the county court across the street and the federal court across the street. But on the interior, it starts looking like they just stacked up mobile home units, you know, with like, like really unfortunate choice of siding that it was, kind of really degrades the entire project. So if this project goes through, I don't want the same experience to happen and I would like to see it be really reviewed and vetted by the Design Review Board first before I approve it. That's a long statement, but that's how I feel about this.
Is there any other questions for Kevin? Bill Brown?
Yeah, Kevin, I know there was some discussion, I caught part of the Plan Commission meeting on the kind of the bonus, the bonus FAR that you can get for larger units, if you have larger lots or something like that. And I was wondering if you knew what the intended effect or intended outcome of that rule was, because it seems like the practical outcome, what I've seen it has been, is that when developers aren't approved through the PUD project, then they will sometimes just build by right and make four bedroom apartments instead of one or two bedroom apartments. And then they get the automatic .7 FAR instead of the .5. Do you know what the original intent of that was?
I actually have not looked into what the, you know, the original ordinance that, that implemented that rule. I can guess that it was probably to increase. Well, I was thinking it might be to increase open space on a lot. But I'm not, I'm not totally sure if that's, if that's really what the intent was. I think practically what it has done, as, which as you pointed out, is since the, the rule, I'll paraphrase, it says you can go up to a .7 floor area ratio if you have 2,000 square feet of lot size per unit. So in, in practical terms, as you pointed out, what that'll do is it just incentivizes people to build fewer units in the same size building. So if you, you know, if you have one four bedroom unit, you know, and you have 2,000 square feet of lot area for that, that counts the same as if you have one, one bedroom unit and then you would need 2,000 square feet of lot, lot area for that. So it really just, I, I think incentivizes larger units, which I think the market these days, we haven't, we've seen people proposing smaller units. I don't know if that's just preference of, of people these days where they want to live. But we're seeing more proposals for single, single bedroom type, type apartment buildings.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I was just wondering, yeah, it just, I just couldn't figure it out, you know, what the original intent for that would be. Okay, thanks.
Mary Alice?
So it sounds like, it sounds like most people have gone through their questions. I just thought we would get some kind of motion on the floor so we can discuss this. I would like to move with no recommendation, ordinance number 202012070, an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for the planned unit development at 602 South Lincoln Avenue. Plan Case 2411, PUD 20, to City Council after the Design Review Board's recommendation.
I'll second that.
Hey, Mary Alice, and the motion, Sharice had the, the second. Is there any other discussion before we go to a vote? Mary Alice?
So as, as I look through all of, all of the information from the Plan Commission and from the different input, and we did receive two or three different public input letters for tonight that will be part of the record, but I don't think that they were really summarized yet. I would like to say that basically, I mean, there's been a lot of conversation about this for the past couple of weeks. And I think that City Council should understand that what we're doing now is we're looking at it as a PUD. So we're looking at the criterion that have been established for whether or not it meets those nine goals for the PUD. And, and as I go through all of those nine goals, I really think that there's three on here that, that this one is most closely aligned with in that these three items are the ones that we should really be talking about. So the first one is, it says to promote flexibility in a subdivision and development design where necessary. And this is where the increase in the FAR is requested. So that for the PUDs, they're not actually asking for any zoning changes or, or minor or major variances. Rather, they just get waivers and that's kind of the purpose of the PUD. But in exchange for those waivers, we should get public amenities not typically promoted by the zoning ordinance. And we should get something that is closely aligned with the Urbana Comprehensive Plan. So those are numbers four and five. So I guess my concern here is, is that A, we have, we have three, so we have a 50% increase in FAR. B, we have the, the trade off there for that is, is the sidewalk. And I think also includes preserving the mature trees. And I guess my, my question I want to pose to City Council is, do we feel that that is enough in order to increase FAR by 50%? I think that that is, I think that we could, that there could be more that could be done to meet the intent of the PUD statute, or ordinance rather. And that's the conversation that I kind of want to have is, does City Council feel that those two trade offs there are sufficient to meet our goals for the PUD? And then number five, I just wanted to bring up the comprehensive plan because a lot of the goals that have been discussed, both in the staff report and by other people, have a lot to do with the character of the neighborhood, the design and so forth, which is my, why I would like for this to go to the Design Review Board before it comes to City Council, since those goals really should be reviewed by the DBR before we can then assess and see whether or not it meets those comprehensive plans in future land uses. So, so that's, that's my question that I want to pose to City Council. I feel like we can potentially request the, the developers to look into more sustainable building. I know that Dennis had mentioned they were going to put in charging stations, which is great. It would be great to see other things that achieve our sustainable goals within the city. Something such as geothermal heating, solar, there could be a, a number of different things that could help us achieve that goal. So that's, that's what I'd like to propose to City Council.
Sharice, had you had your hand up earlier?
Yeah, I guess, you know, you said that the architects were here. I'd like to hear from them what their plans are regarding this, this space or what their goals are. Another thing I, I guess that I'm interested in is the, the fact that there are, there are people that are living in these homes that, which means that they're livable. What will happen regarding those living spaces before? What are you going to do with them? Is there, are there any plans at all to try to reserve those homes and maybe move them in a different area or are they just going to be torn down or what?
I see that the owner is on the line. Christopher Hartman needs to be made a panelist, assuming he'd like to respond. I have not yet seen the architect's names.
I think that's Jacob Unzicker and Josh Daly, correct Lori?
Okay, yeah, so they're there.
They're in as a panelist as well.
Oh, great.
This is Josh Daly with Mudry Architecture. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I guess to start off, I'll, I think Kevin summarized a lot of what, of what we've tried to do here is, in, in this design. And Mr. Roberts, you also pointed out a lot of things that happened at the meeting. So I don't want to go round and around on what, what Plan Commission did. But to answer the question of, of what's going to happen to the existing structures, well, they, they would be taken down. This development is, is, is going to respectfully replace them with what we're proposing here. So I guess, I guess I just want to start off with what, what we went into this as what this development is, is not going to be. This development is not going to be targeted 100% toward students. We specifically made these studios and one bedrooms because we would like another clientele, or at least our client would like another clientele, possibly professors, visiting professors who are here for a year and would like to live right across the street from campus. So in order to do that, the existing housing that's there now, which has its own appearance from the street, does not have its own appearance when you go inside. It's a different world. So what we're trying to do is replace in scale, size, character, material, all these things that we're going to have to meet with the DRB, that is very true. We have to go before, before that board and get approved there as well. We're trying to provide a quality unit that is going to meet today's standards. And the current housing that's there now would not meet today's standards. The current housing there may have an eclectic mix of, of styles and character, that is very true. However, at the same time, as we've been talking about, this is the Lincoln Avenue corridor. It is high intensity for the comprehensive plan directly across from the university in this location, especially this north end. We're pushing the northern end of Lincoln Avenue here. So that was one of the reasons that the site was chosen. But we're not coming in here and we're going to put four bedroom apartments. It's going to be studios and ones, which is a big difference from others that have tried to, to propose developments along this corridor. So I think in terms of the replacement, the ground level units would be adaptable to meet the current accessibility guidelines. We have to follow stringent energy codes that the current structures would not have. And I'd like to say also that we're not only asking for FAR in trade for a sidewalk movement or trees. The other thing that this development does is it gets rid of a lot of driveways that are not used very well and in not very good shape. We've also pulled the buildings back from the street, especially on Lincoln, by another 10, almost 12 feet, which is, which is I think going to improve the fabric between California and Oregon. I think that's bigger than the sidewalk, actually, in terms of the, the character, what you're going to see, because we will also have to follow the landscape standards in the front yard. So I think, I think those are the big items that this brings to the table. We're not asking for a very high density here. We're asking for a respectful, precise design. This is not clear cutting, like you said, we're not going in and we're, we're going to, we're going to precisely insert these buildings and this design reflects that, especially the up and down massing that you see on the buildings. We didn't just make it one roof line. We didn't make it one height. If you want to look at the elevations on your, on your packet there, your, your case number there, you can see next to the, the Europa House, we're not much higher than that. We're, we're, we're actually lower in most cases. So I just, I want to say that there was a very concerted conscientious effort here to insert this with very precise design parameters to make, to make this work. And I'll, I'll stop there. And my partner Jacob is also on here, so to the sustainability thing, maybe he can, I'll, I'll mute myself here and see if he can chime in.
All right. Yeah, thanks, Josh. I guess I was just going to mention just a few more or to retouch on some things that Dennis had brought up too, is that in terms of sustainability, it, it was our intent to do a variety of things towards the sustainability of this, of this development and preserving the trees definitely was a key part of, of that. But in addition, we talked about the, or Kevin mentioned the permeable paving. We are working to provide some infrastructure inside of the buildings to the attic so that there would be an easy installation of future solar panels. Bicycle parking, we actually would qualify for not only a credit towards lead certification, but it would also potentially qualify for an exemplary performance credit because of how much bike parking that we would be providing, which would be equivalent to about which would be, um, equivalent to about 100%, 100% of the occupants for the development. When in this case of, uh, LEED certification, it's only 50% is, is 15% is required. So, you know, there's a, there's a variety of, of things that we're trying to do. Open space is another one. Uh, so there's several, um, kind of areas that we're targeting for sustainability. And we would actually say that's also part of what we would say should be considered for, um, the exchange for this additional FAR, um, that, um, we've been talking about. So, um, yeah, I'll, I think that's all I, I had to add as well. But, um, again, we're, we're available for, for other questions.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions? Dennis?
One of the concerns might be whether there you would be an overflow of parking so that we would see a desire to have street parking for the tenants. Can you tell us what you expect or how you provided for avoiding putting additional cars along the streets in West Urbana?
Sure. Um, this is a, um, an issue that comes up a lot of times because, um, although we feel like it's important to try to discourage, vehicular, uh, usage, we want to try to encourage, uh, alternative forms of transportation and, um, walkability, um, use of bicycles, that kind of thing. Uh, there, there's still a remnant of people that use cars. So, um, what can be a problem sometimes is with the development that, um, sometimes there are, uh, that you can't avoid having vehicles coming to the, to that area. So our approach in this case was, um, we decided we didn't want to, we kind of went in between. We, we felt like it was important to meet the, the zoning requirement, but to just meet the zoning requirement. We, we didn't want to exceed the zoning requirement, although I think that there are, uh, there's precedent that that is actually, that maybe even encouraged as a, uh, something for a PUD's consideration is to actually provide more parking than was required. But we thought that that was, uh, it was important to, uh, provide the minimum amount of parking that was required and not exceed that. We are providing the amount of vehicular parking, uh, that's required, uh, in the zoning, uh, for the current, uh, zoning district, um, which works out to be, uh, 49 cars. It's point seven car spaces per, uh, unit. We've done a check and I think that right now, even though we, as we've discussed, the density or the number of occupants on site is likely very similar to what we're proposing, it looks like there's a probably about 30 spaces actually on the property where people can park. Although the way that that's laid out, it's a little bit haphazard. So, uh, I think 30 is pretty generous, uh, of what you could actually park on the site. So, so I think that, um, we're providing adequate parking because we're meeting what the zoning requirement is. We're also trying to make sure that we, uh, minimize the impact of that parking, uh, on the neighborhood. We, we have reduced the, um, vehicular access to one point. And for, and we know that that helps for safety reasons, but, um, and also just efficiency. We've also, as Kevin mentioned in the presentation, we are tucking parking underneath the buildings. Um, so that's intended to hide those, um, so that, um, most of the, um, cars are not actually going to be even visible from, from outside on the street uh, because everything's tucked on, on the interior. Uh, so in general, that's kind of the approach that we took on parking.
Did you expect that some of the tenants would not necessarily own a car, but they would be people who would either bicycle or walk? Are you counting on that somewhat?
Uh, yes, that was part of the reason why we wanted to increase the, the bicycle parking, um, and actually wanted to provide a secure, covered, uh, bicycle parking area. So, um, roughly, um, 35% of the spaces are covered and secure. Um, so yes, now we definitely wanted to, um, provide that for people who would like, um, to use a bicycle. And, uh, so we're trying to encourage that and we do think that that would be, uh, the case.
One more question. As far as the materials that you're going to be using for construction, uh, it is a little bit hard to tell exactly the materials, but it looks like at least in the lower sections of the first stories, there will be the use of brick and perhaps other, uh, paneling or siding for the upper stories. Am I guessing this correctly?
Yes, that's a good, um, observation. We, we do intend that the, uh, the lower stories or portions of the building would, uh, be, uh, clad with, uh, a masonry, either, either brick or a stone. The, uh, the images that you would have seen so far would actually be more of a, a stone material. Uh, but, uh, brick is certainly another option, uh, that we have considered. And, you know, either of those I know are, um, available as, uh, options on the, the palette of materials that are available to us in the, in the guidelines. And then, uh, the upper sections, um, primarily would be a, uh, an engineered, uh, wood siding product, um, which we have found is, um, it's, it's more durable or it's longer lasting, has long warranties, um, comparative to, uh, a fiber cement, uh, product, uh, which is also common for a lot of, um, residential developments. But in this case, um, because, uh, there is wood siding as a, uh, material that's currently used in the neighborhood, that, uh, that would be our intent is for the majority of the rest of the cladding to be, uh, that type of material, which also, again, um, we're choosing to select materials that, uh, would be, uh, sustainable, sustainably sourced. Um, so, uh, in general, it's masonry plus a, uh, engineered wood siding. There would probably be a variety of, uh, textures, um, just to kind of give some, uh, interest, uh, aesthetically. But, uh, the same basic product, just maybe in some different configurations.
You, you currently own the buildings now and are you going to be waiting for the, um, the leases to expire before you do your demolition?
Yes, um, I believe that, um, there may still, I, I'm, I'm not sure. I guess I can't comment on the ownership of the lots. I'm also with Mode 3 Architecture. But, um, the, I understand that yes, the, the, um, uh, intent would be to wait for the current leases to, uh, expire prior to demolition, which, uh, would not be occurring until, um, the, uh, early summer of, uh, this coming year, 2021 was the intent.
Yes, the, uh, one of the pages of the plan, Exhibit F, um, says that May 2021 to June would be the demolition of existing structures. So that'd be after the closing of the next spring semester at the university. Okay, thank you.
Mary Alice, you have your hand up next.
Yeah, I, I wanted to ask, um, if, if I remember correctly, the LEED certified as energy, uh, it's an energy rating for buildings, is that correct?
Uh, that's, that's correct. It's, um, you gain, and I guess I should clarify that although, uh, we, along with our client, are committed to, uh, pursuing some of these sustainable features, uh, it's not intended to get a complete LEED certification for this project, um, which involves, um, a review process, uh, by that organization, the Green Building Council. And, um, it provide, it's, it's a little bit more than intense than what is intended. However, uh, we do feel that it's important and even without getting that credit, that there are some things that would be, uh, good to pursue. And so I just wanted to make that clarification that although these are LEED-type credits, we, we're not, we're not intending that this project would be completely LEED certified. But yes, to answer your question, um, there's various areas, um, where you can get credit. Um, energy is definitely one that's, uh, key. Um, also it has to do with, um, uh, transportation, uh, and ease of, um, uh, transit, uh, which this, this site is, uh, would be primed for. Um, the other has to do with, uh, things that, that do with, uh, the, um, ecology of the site. Um, you know, preserving, uh, the existing, um, the, the natural features, which, you know, is what we're kind of trying to do with the trees and any new landscaping. Um, also, uh, the materials that you use for a building and how those are, are sourced. Um, so, so yeah, there's a variety of areas. Energy is definitely part of that.
But can you expand upon a little bit in terms of what you're doing in your building process that would meet those criteria for LEED, um, for energy?
Sure. I guess the number one thing would be that, um, you know, any new projects that, uh, are designed, um, will have to meet, uh, just by law in the state of Illinois, they have to meet the, uh, 2018, right now, the 2018 Illinois Energy Conservation Code, which, um, if you compare, you know, how the, so that code is updated every, uh, a few years. And every time it's updated, uh, the requirements, uh, get, um, a little more strict. So, um, you know, it'd be hard for me to explain, you know, exact, uh, and exact numbers, how to compare the requirements now versus just three years ago. But just so that you understand that it's going to be fully compliant with those requirements of the Illinois Energy Conservation Code, which also would be along the same parallel path to achieving, uh, the energy, credits in, uh, in LEED. Um, there would have to be some additional documentation, um, and, um, some other, I guess, uh, proof of that, I guess, that would be required in order to get the certification. But again, this building is inherently, or these buildings are inherently going to have, um, a, uh, a fairly robust, uh, energy efficiency, uh, built in.
So I guess, I mean, what I, what I'm seeking here is in the, in the PUD, you have to go above and beyond the zoning requirements, right? So that's, that's kind of why I'm pushing a little bit on the energy here. Um, I understand that you have to meet the, the state rules, uh, the 2018 that you referenced. Is there something that you are planning on doing in the construction that goes above and beyond that?
Well, we're still at the early stages. So, you know, that's definitely, uh, something that we're still trying to grapple with is exactly what the building is going to look like. And some of the specifications, you know, would not be completely figured out until later. But, um, some of the areas that we could, uh, look at is, um, some more efficient, uh, heating units, uh, for the, for the project. I know you mentioned, uh, geothermal. We have, we have yet to maybe, um, evaluate that. But, you know, any of those types of things, uh, would definitely be areas that we would, uh, be looking into. Um, we just, we haven't gotten completely to that, that stage yet. But yes, that's something that we would, we would be considering.
Well, I would, I, I mean, I, I don't know what the other thoughts are, city council members are, but I do think that having more energy efficiency beyond what is required by law, I think is something that would be highly desirable within our, um, community, just to meet some of our own goals. And I, I know that there is different areas that you can do that in. And I guess that would, that's what I would propose to city council is to, um, incorporate more energy efficiency into the plans as we go forward, as part of that.
Um, Bill Brown?
Um, yeah, just a couple of questions on the, um, you, I've never been inside any of these, I don't think. Um, but I've been in some in the area. I know that they can get pretty chopped up. But we do have a local preservation, uh, and preservation and conservation group, PACA, that might be able to, um, recycle, uh, reuse anything that if, if, once, you know, once they're vacant, you start tearing down walls, uh, before you, if you just don't go in with a bulldozer, um, there might be pocket doors or stairways or, or other things worth saving in there. Um, have you been enough to know whether something like that would be an option to, um, allow one of our, allow PACA to go in and, um, preserve anything that might be worth saving?
I have not myself and, um, I'm not sure if the, the owner is, uh, able or that our client is able to answer that, uh, right now. But I would think that, um, that would definitely be, uh, an option. I know that, you know, they and we as the architects, um, uh, although we're proposing, uh, a new structure uh, that would replace what's there, it, it's, it's not our intent to, um, you know, completely, uh, get rid of, of everything just for the sake of getting rid of it. Um, so I, I'm sure that, uh, um, they would be completely open to that, that type of thing.
I think with enough notice that they, you know, they have volunteers that you, you might have to sign a waiver. They have to sign a waiver or something, but they have, they have ways of, uh, retrieving some, um, anything that might be worth saving. I appreciate your comments on the driveway removal. I know as a cyclist, especially on Lincoln Avenue, um, people turning right into driveways are really a, a big hazard. Um, and even walking along there because of the slope in the wintertime, it can be slippery and you slip out into the, the street. So that, that is, um, that is worth something. Um, as far as accessibility goes, um, and I see there's probably, what, 17 or 19 ground floor units? Um, those would probably all have roll-in level, um, entryways. For three-story buildings, you don't have to put in elevators, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, but that, I don't think any of the current buildings are accessible. And I know, um, the studio in one bedroom, there was a nearby development in Nevada and Lincoln that wanted to be studio in one bedroom originally. Um, but then they didn't because, um, it was too big. Basically, the building was too big, so they got turned down. But they eventually built, built four bedrooms. I do think, um, in response to Mary Alice's, um, requests that we think about how much we're getting in, in return for what we're giving, I don't think of it as a 50% increase because I do think that, um, I mean, it's the current FAR is point six three, I think Kevin said, or six two, something like that. So to go from the current to point seven, whatever, is close 25%. So when I'm thinking about what we're getting in return, I'm thinking, um, for that 25% increase in FAR. I do think with the future land use, um, being medium-high density, it seems like it's already a little un, uh, underzoned for the future land use. Our sevens, I don't know if we've had any, our sevens built by right that I can remember in the 25 years I've lived in Urbana. Those are mostly, um, mostly obsolete buildings or, or nearing the end of their lifelife times or just not really, um, in demand anymore. I think there, that one that was built on Lincoln in Iowa, I think was a, a PUD by itself. If I remember right, um, that's only new construction I can think of that might be considered our seven in that area. I think, um, the opportunity zone tax incentives in this area, I don't know how many people are familiar with those. We have two opportunity zones in Urbana. And that, that was part of the Trump tax, um, tax and jobs program that, uh, was passed in like 2017, started in 2018. So, um, developers or investors in the, in the funds that, that invest in these projects can get a break on their capital gains taxes that they roll over into the projects. They get a defer, deferral on those taxes and some, um, some break on how much they have to pay if they hold it long enough. And if they hold the project after 10 years, um, any accumulation, any appreciation is not taxable. They sell it after 10 years. Um, and that includes accumulated depreciation that you write off every year. So every, after 10 So every, after 10 years, most projects would probably depreciate 30, 35%. So if even if you sold it for what you put into it after 10 years, that would be a a bonus. So I think because of that, we're getting some of these kind of lower intensity projects that weren't financially feasible before that. I think in general, the opportunity zones for the university areas just doesn't meet the goals of what they're originally intended for. It's beyond our control. That was federal and state programs. And four of our six zones in Champaign-Urbana are on campus. They're supposed to be encouraging development in, you know, distressed areas where people, where there's a lot of unemployment and poverty. And because students don't make much money, those census tracts were designated a high, low-income tracks, basically. So that's what qualifies them for the enterprise zones. And then the state got into the selection process. And I think they probably were, they were probably influenced by the people that said, well, I want to invest where I can make money, and on campus is where I can make money. So four of the zones have ended up on campus. Most all, the other three are all in Champaign. So this is our only zone from Bucy over to Wright Street. And basically, from Lincoln to Wright Street, it's all university-owned. So we aren't going to get much out of that zone. But there is one up in North Cunningham. I don't know if the developers are local or North Lincoln, I mean, if the developers are local or interested in looking at the old water company project, I'm sure that we could talk to them about that. That's definitely an opportunity zone. So that said, I think that's that's kind of why we're we're seeing some of these that wouldn't have been profitable before. And, you know, I I can't, you can't decide if that's a good thing or a bad thing because I do like, I like these old buildings that, you know, at some point they are going to have to be replaced. I'd rather see them replaced in the sort of development that the neighborhood wants there and not the high-intensity development that would require, that would be required in order to turn a higher return on investment without that kind of zone. So I I'll support forwarding this to after the design review. I think, you know, I really appreciate the thought that's gone into planting around the trees and everything and all the careful thought and all the work that Kevin has done working with the developers to make sure that they are sensitive to all the things we know people care about.
Okay, just want to remind council, we've got a large agenda in front of us. We've, we've invested a lot of time on this one, on this one ordinance. It sounds like from Bill Brown's comments, we're ready for a vote. We've got a motion on the floor. Does anybody have any other comments that you absolutely need to get in before we move on and have a vote?
Can I have one final word, Bill?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. I'll try and make this very quickly. I I I agree with Bill that I am, I I think that this project is has a lot of potential. And and simply, I'm trying to see if there is some way to improve upon it a little bit. And improving upon it is is to meet those sustainable sustainability goals. So I'm happy to hear that several people approve of sending it to DBR before it comes to city council for final approval. But I I would like to push and just say, I think it would be great. And it would really be a strong PUD case if we could incorporate more of those sustainability goals.
Okay, having said that, clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, with that, that ordinance passes with no recommendation. If I've got this right, no recommendation with the, this to be going to the design review board before we take a final vote. Next up on the agenda, it looks like it's an accompanying ordinance. It's ordinance number 2020-12-071, an ordinance approving a final development plan for a planned unit development, 602 South Lincoln Avenue, CCH Development LLC and CMH Development LLC Plan Case 2412, PUD 20.
Just for consistency's sake, I I can make an emotion for that one.
Go ahead.
Okay, I move that this ordinance number 2020-12-070, an ordinance approving a preliminary development plan for plan unit development at 602, sorry, an ordinance approving a final development plan for plan unit development at 602 South Lincoln Avenue, Plan Case 2412, PUD 20, be forwarded to city council with no recommendation after the design review board reviews and provides their input.
I'll second.
Second. That's Dennis Roberts?
Yeah.
Okay, we've got a first and a second. Is there any other discussion, since this is an accompanying ordinance? Talk about Dennis?
I really appreciate the additional setback along Lincoln Avenue. It allows the street to breathe and it still provides plenty of space for the development to occur. And I think that having enough room for landscaping and a sidewalk, instead of just a strip of sidewalk right next to the curb, makes a huge improvement. And I think it honors the general look of the community and the Wester Banner neighborhood.
Okay, with that, clerk, can you please call the roll?
I think the mayor wanted to say something, Bill.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mayor.
Just a quick note, following up on the sustainability issues. I had a conversation with Scott Tess several weeks ago, asking many of the same questions about, as we look forward to redoing the comp plan, what kinds of, and and requirements for PUDs and that sort of thing. And he has done a lot of research on various things that could be recommended, including an emphasis not only on energy efficiency, but also indoor air quality, which is incredibly important now with with COVID and 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 that sort of thing. So I can, we can forward some information to you on on those issues because he's compiled a lot of that already.
Okay, any other hands up? Seeing none, now we'll call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And with that, that also passes, going to the the full council with no recommendation until we hear more from the design review board. Next up on the agenda is ordinance number 2020-12-072, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number Four. This is from Finance Elizabeth Hannah.
Yes, this is an omnibus budget amendment, which incorporates a number of changes. I'll run through this fairly quickly. This would create a budget for a couple of grants that were approved by council within the last month. The Lumpkin Family Foundation Grant and the Cures Economic Support Grant. You're familiar with those, so I probably don't need to say anything about that. Would increase expenditures in the public works facilities budget by $10,000 for repair and maintenance materials. And that's for supplies related to the COVID pandemic. So things like hand sanitizer, wipes, other cleaning products and such. In the line item for uniforms and the police patrol budget, would we would carry over $28,015 from the FY20 budget. This is one of those few accounts we have that is kind of like a revolving account where we budget a level amount each year, but we know that the expenses don't always occur consistently each year. So we roll them over after the end of each year. And this account pays for things like bulletproof vests, badges, and other items that aren't part of the uniform allowance. A small, a small amount here to pay our share of replacing a repeater for the countywide outdoor warning sirens system. There's a small rebudget in the VERF fund for purchase of radios. In the, in the cable TV fund, there's a fairly extensive list of purchases. And this is because, the timing is because this money has to be spent by January. It's just part of our franchise agreement. And so they're kind of making up a backlog, I think, in replacing different kinds of equipment. A couple of minor adjustments in the arms budget. We would rebudget $20,000 in the, for abandoned properties program grants. This is just a timing thing. It's money that wasn't spent last year. And then in TIFF1, the, the, the last existing redevelopment agreement for TIFF1 has been closed out. And so we would amend the budget to distribute all of the remaining funds from TIFF1 to the various taxing districts according to their current tax rates. There's a, an insurance reimbursement for hail damage that occurred to city vehicles during the storm back in July. And then there will be a corresponding expense to to pay for those repairs. And then some additional COVID-related expenses in the IT budget, about $23,000 for video conferencing equipment, upgraded telephones in the vestibules at the city building, laptops and other equipment to facilitate remote working. So it's, it's quite a long list, but for the most part, fairly routine.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Mary Alice, you have a question?
Yes, thanks, Elizabeth, for that explanation. There, there's a couple of little things that I'm confused about in the fiscal impact. You said the general fund expenditures will increase by $572,232. When I added up the expenses that you have listed here, I get $213,000. So.
So part, part of that is, if you look at the Exhibit A, at the list there, that's $572,232. So a big part of that is the $500,000 expense that goes along with the Cures Economic Support Grant.
Oh, so you're, you're listing that as an expense and not, when I see grants, I feel like, oh, that's money that we're taking in.
Yeah, when you see grants, it's usually both. It's money coming in and then, and then the money goes back out again to pay for whatever, whatever purpose we received the grant.
Right, so, okay, so I guess my, my confusion here is it was related also to the grant in that we have the the information technology expenses. You said you had the hand, the the COVID-related expenses for cities' facilities. Are those being offset by this grant? Are those two expenditures, things that are in addition that we are paying? Or are those two things that are being covered by the Cures Act?
So no, the, the Cures Grant that is in this budget amendment is for economic support. So ones are going to come in and go back to local businesses. The, the specific items in facilities and in IT for COVID-related expenses, there is no corresponding revenue for that. There, at some point, we'll gather up all those expenses and we'll request reimbursement from FEMA, but we haven't done that yet.
Okay, all right, I think I was getting confused with the other COVID grants that we've gotten. And I know that they were supposed to cover some of those additional expenses. So the upshot here is that, the upshot is, is that we're spending half a million dollars more. Is that the upshot?
Well, it's complicated because we're dealing with multiple funds. We're spending an additional $572,000 in the general fund alone, plus money in other funds, some of which is offset by revenue.
It's a little complicated, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. Then you really kind of have to look at it at the fund level, right? Because each fund is sort of, almost operates like an independent business, kind of, for lack of a better explanation.
Right, I guess, I mean, I think that it it is a little confusing how this is all laid out. And when I was, I was adding them up from the, from the actual text of the memo, I did not go through and add up the the items on amendment Exhibit A, sorry. But when I look at that, if I look at the General Operating Fund, which is the very first part of that Exhibit A, we have revenue of $538,000, which is an increase, right? And we have, immediately following that, we have expenditures of $572,000, which is a difference of $6,000.
It's, it's a difference of more than $6,000.
Oh, it is more than $6,000. Why do I see fund ending fund balances negative $6,000?
That has to do with where the adjustments are just for timing. It doesn't necessarily affect that fund balance in the same way. So if it was something, it was something that we were expecting to spend in last year's budget and we've estimated the fund balance based on last year's budget and we carried over, it doesn't impact in the same way.
Okay, all right. Still find this document a little confusing, the way it was all laid out. But maybe I'll call you.
We can work on that next, organize it a little more consistent with the exhibit next time.
Okay, that would be helpful. That would be extremely helpful.
Anybody else have any questions for Elizabeth? Can I entertain a motion?
Yeah, I'll do that. Okay, so I move that ordinance number 2020-12-072, which is an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number Four Omnibus, be forwarded to the city council with approval.
Got a second?
I'll second that.
Charisse? Any further discussion?
We'll hope for some clarification.
Okay, with no further discussion, clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yeah, Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, with that, that ordinance passes. As Dennis pointed out, it's recommended, but maybe with a little bit of clarification on the, on the spending table. Next up is Resolution Number 2020-12-061R, a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, the state motor fuel tax for Race Street resurfacing project. This is Public Works. Tim, did you have any comments on this?
Uh, yeah, just high-level view stuff. This project was included in our CIP. And with the approval of this
Hey, Tim, if you can hear me, I think that your connection is kind of bad. The audio is really bad.
Begin design and construction should be slated to begin probably. Is this any better? Can you guys hear me now?
Oh, that, that's better. I was going to have Carol interpret for you.
Okay, basically, I was just saying, high-level overview, this was a project, or this is for a project that was included in our CIP, slated for design in late FY21, beginning construction FY22. We are still on pace with that schedule. I think the only modification from any of that is we had the design budget at $25,000. Now it's to $30,000, so that's what the resolution has been made for. We should be well under the budgeted construction cost of this originally planned for. Other than that, that's about all I've got. This is for Race Street reconstruction from Washington to California, resurfacing.
Bill Brown, do you have a question?
Yeah, I think there was some question about what the scope of this project was going to be a while back. So it looks like it's confined mostly to the resurfacing of the street and rebuilding or installing ramps. There's still curbs in some of those spots. I think on both sides, it's probably brick most of the way. I don't remember if that's supposed to be replaced in brick eventually, but this project won't be doing anything with the sidewalks themselves, right? Just the ramps.
Correct. The intent is just to do resurfacing and as a function of which, we will be bringing all ramps into compliance.
Okay, and if there's, if there's bad spots in the sidewalk, would that just be a separate project then to include in the brick sidewalk maintenance program or something? would that just be a separate project then to include in the brick sidewalk maintenance program or something?
Yes, likely we would separate that from this project and keep this within the scope intended for the time being. It's not to say that if we found things that needed addressed that we couldn't try to incorporate that, but that's probably outside of the scope of what we're trying to do with this.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Charisse? You're muted, Charisse.
The, uh, contracting, the people that we contracted to do this, are these the same people that did the Ellis Drive resurfacing?
Yes, they are. We, they are part of our supplemental engineering services agreement, which runs out, I believe. I'm not sure if it's the end of this calendar year, the end of this fiscal year, but this is one of the last ones that will be under that supplemental engineering services agreement.
Is this the same materials that they used for?
No, this will be mill and overlay. Basically, they're going to mill a couple inches of the surface off and put back hot mixed asphalt in place of it. It won't be the slag seal that went down on Dr. Ellis.
Okay, it'd be interesting. Okay.
Sounds like we're ready for a motion. Bill Brown?
Yeah, I'll move to send a resolution number, I think it's 2020-12-061R to city council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, Bill Brown had the motion, Dennis Roberts had the second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, the clerk, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, with that, that resolution passes for recommendation for approval by full city council. And next up on the agenda is resolution number 2020-12-062R, a resolution approving an emergency solutions grants program sub recipient agreement with CU at home for fiscal year 2020 through 2021. And community development has this. Was there anybody going to speak about this, Lori?
This is, this is Sheila Dodd. I'll speak to this one.
Okay.
And I'll actually speak to both Cunningham Township and the CU at home at the same time, if that's okay.
Sure.
The City of Urbana is an active participant in the continuum of service providers to the homeless. And in the summertime, June, July, the continuum was notified that they were going to be receiving a little over $700,000 through the state of Illinois, emergency solutions grant funding, COVID relief funding. So as a part of that process, the continuum reached out to a group, the group for applications and awards on what was the greatest need in the community. Cunningham Township put forth an application for rapid rehousing and tenant based rental assistance. And CU at home is asking for funding to help with their year round shelter services. Because neither agency has implemented an emergency solutions grant in the past, the state requires them to go through an experienced grantee. And because Urbana has experience doing the emergency solutions grant program in the past, we agreed to be their fiscal agent. So the total grant received will be 194,411, of which Cunningham Township will get 128,700 and CU at home will get 42,750. And then the balance will go to Urbana for our administrative cost in administering the grant.
Thank you, Sheila. Does anybody have any questions? Charisse, you had your hand up first. You're muted, Charisse.
Sorry again, when, when I was reading this, what are, are we going to input the dates to the resolution, Sheila?
On the agreements?
Well, there's something that says, you know, whereas on date, the city received notice of the DHS and.
Oh, yes, yes, we will fill that in. Yes.
Okay.
We received, we received notice in July, but we didn't get the final information until the day before Thanksgiving. So it's been a long drawn out process, but we want to hit the ground running with the programs because it's desperately needed.
Yeah.
Mary Alice?
Um, so Sheila, in the ordinance for the Cunningham Township, it says that, that there's an agreement attached and I, I don't know if the agreement is missing. I wanted to know a little bit more about what Cunningham Township was going to be doing with the, according to this, the rapid rehousing tenant based rental assistance.
They will be providing services to the homeless or near homeless for rental assistance, counseling and coaching to, it'll be a one to two year program to get people back on their feet and, and into safe and secure housing.
Is the agreement, was the agreement included in the packet that I'm just?
I'm, I'm not sure. It was.
A section.
The signed agreement, yeah, the signed agreement is in line. I, I can forward it to you.
Okay, that would be great.
Yeah, if you didn't get that one, you didn't get the CU at home, so I'll send both.
Thank you.
Jared?
Sheila, I don't know if we will, um, possible, but like, uh, all, all things when we have a good grant that comes in, I'm always interested in, you know, being able to get a report somewhere down the line of how monies were spent and how those funds, obviously the Cunningham Township funds will have a very obvious impact in Urbana. And not that I'm not going to hear about those, but for the ones with CU at home, seeing how those, uh, those funds actually get to get put to use and what effect they have on Urbana residents at some point down the line would be, would be great to see.
Sure, we report monthly to the state on actually funds expended. And then we will have to report quarterly on the impact. Obviously, like you said, Cunningham Township is an easy one to see. Homeless shelter is a little more difficult because they can show numbers served, but you know, where they are banner residents or could they be your banner residents? We just, we just don't know, but we can certainly provide the same information to you that we're providing to the state to show impact.
Sure, that'd be good to at least see that much.
Sure.
Jared, go ahead.
Be willing to make a motion if we, if you could.
Yes, go ahead, please.
All right, I'll move a resolution number 2020-12-062R, a resolution improving an emergency solution to grant program recipient agreement with CU at home for fiscal year 2020, 2021. He sets a full council recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Hey, Jared with the motion and Mary Alice with the second. Any further discussion? Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, with that, that resolution passes with recommendation to the full city council for approval. And Sheila had already talked about this, but the next one up is resolution number 2020-12-063R, a resolution approving an emergency solutions grants program sub recipient agreement with Cunningham Township for fiscal year 2020-2021. Yeah, any further questions about, Bill Brown?
I was just going to move, move to send resolution number 2020-12-063R to city council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any further discussion before we vote? Seeing none, clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, with that, there's, send that on to the full city council with a recommendation for approval. The next item on the agenda is resolution number 2020-12-06R, a resolution certifying a community housing development organization for the Urbana Home Consortium Habitat, July 2020. Was there anybody that was going to speak to this specifically?
Yes, Alyssa should be on the call.
Hello, I am Alyssa Cheegee and I will be speaking on the next three resolutions since they are all related. So every year, the City of Urbana and the Urbana Home Consortium, which consists of City of Urbana, City of Champaign and Champaign County gets our home funding allocation and we split this money. And part of the split, we can use up to 15% of it towards community housing development organizations. You're going to hear me reference them as CHODOs. Everything in my world is an abbreviation. So we can spend up to 15% of our, or we can spend at least 15% of our money providing funding for CHODO developing and developing projects. And then we can do an additional 5% for admin and operating costs. So this year in total, we have 123,538 available for CHODO project funding. And that will be split between Habitat for Humanity and First Followers. Tonight, I'm only going to speak on Habitat and we'll bring First Followers later. We're just still working out a few details with their agreements. So once we have that worked out, we will bring those agreements to council as well. And then we also have a total of 41,110 available for CHODO operating costs. And so Habitat will be awarded funding to do two new construction projects. Each project will receive 34,179 for project costs and then additional 7,500 for operating and admin costs. So in total Habitat will get 68,358 for project funding and 15,000 for operating funding. Construction for these two homes is anticipated to begin in the spring of 2021 and completion of the projects and moving date for the families would be in fall 2021. The addresses of these two properties are located at 1211 West Eats and 207 Kerr Avenue. And then these homes will be sold and occupied to two low income families that will be selected through Habitat selection process. And so tonight I'm just asking for approval for the following resolutions. Certifying Habitat as a CHODO. Approval and authorization of the CHODO developer agreement. And then approval and authorization of the CHODO operating agreement.
Thank you, Alyssa. Does anybody have any questions? Charisse?
So you said one of, the CHODO is for Habitat only, right?
For tonight, yes, and we will be bringing First Followers at a later date. So this is only Habitat's funding portion tonight.
Okay, and, and these homes are going to be built, starting when?
In the spring, well, approximately. Construction varies depending on weather and other, other unpredicted events.
Okay, and just for, because we're voting on both of them tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so what I would, I guess I would like to have a little bit more information regarding the First Followers agreement or what, what?
We're, we are not voting on First Followers tonight. So those agreements will come later when we, we're just still working out details with them and making sure those agreements are accurate before we bring them to council. So those will be coming. So tonight's just Habitat.
Okay, it's just Habitat. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mary Alice?
So Alyssa, I know that we get these every once in a while. We get the, the CHODOs for Habitat for Humanity. Do you know, I think we typically do two houses a year. Is that about right since you've been around?
Yes, and Habitat's been certified CHODO since 2011. So typically about two houses depending on funding.
Okay, so we've done, this would be, I mean, if that was the average, then we would have been done, this is 18 houses approximately.
Sheila would know better than I would.
Sheila definitely would.
Yeah, not necessarily, Mary Alice. Since 2011, Habitat has built over 60 homes. And so part of the time they use this money, they've used other grant funding, they've used private donations. So there's a variety of funding sources that go into their homeownership projects. But typically, but the years that I was there, we built anywhere from two to five homes a year using the CHODO funding. And then sometimes we just use plain home funding. So this year they're proposing to do two.
Okay, all right, thank you. I can make a motion if nobody else has questions.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead, Mary Alice.
All right. Sorry, I've got too much paper on my desk right now. Here we go, I will.
You know, this would be a great opportunity to make an omnibus motion for all three of these.
Oh, that is a great opportunity.
That's innovative.
It is, all right, so let's see if I remember how to do that.
Get a motion to consider them in omnibus fashion and then we can vote on the motion to send them forward.
All right, I motion that we consider resolution number 2020-12-064R, resolution certifying community housing development organization for the Urbana Home Consortium for Habitat, resolution number 2020-12-065R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organizational Agreement, and resolution number 2020-12-066R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an Urbana Home Consortium Community Housing Development Organization Agreement in omnibus fashion.
Is there a second?
I'd second the motion to consider an omnibus fashion.
Okay, Mary Alice had the motion, Jared had the second. Is there any discussion about the omnibus portion before we vote? Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
With that, the omnibus portion passes. So now that we've passed that, can we have a motion to consider the omnibus consideration for all three?
I will move that we moved the omnibus for all three of the resolutions to city council with the recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, with the second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, me. So this is, this would then go on what we would call a consent agenda, which would be a different agenda than the regular agenda.
Correct.
Okay, that's just a point.
Any other discussion or points to be made? Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, with that, that passes as well. And I suppose that will be on the consent agenda for full city council. Last up on the agenda is resolution number 2020-12-067R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a community partnership agreement. Rose Krantz Incorporated One Door Program Director. I know Carol, you had a comment that you wanted to make prior to a discussion.
I, I did. Bill Brown was kind enough to point out that yet another agreement wasn't attached. And it was the agreement itself with Rose Krantz, which is referenced in the memo and the resolution. So thank you for pointing that out. And I had. So thank you for pointing that out, and I had circulated that at the beginning of the meeting. But I just wanted to highlight a few things before we start. Joel Sanders, Lieutenant Joel Sanders is here. He's been working on the team, collaborating on the One Door program for a number of years now. He's going to give a little summary for people just so that the public remembers what this program is about. And then we were also joined by Joey King from Rose Krantz to the extent that you have any questions. But the highlights of the agreement itself are that we would be transferring $75,000 to Rose Krantz. And Rose Krantz will be hiring the director of the One Door Pilot Program so that we can finally get this launched. And the, the agreement just outlines the, that we will transfer the money in a lump sum, and they will, and they will disperse the money to somebody as in normal salary payments. And if there was anything that caused us to terminate the agreement, there, there are provisions in the agreement for us to get a refund of the unspent dollars. The agreement will be for one year from January 1st, basically for calendar year 2021. And that the pilot of the One Door program will be in Urbana in collaboration with the Urbana Police Department. So I will turn it over to Joel to just give the short summary of the program for those who, who haven't perhaps been introduced to it before. And then also say that in two weeks, there will be a much more detailed description of the program with all the collaborating partners for the, for the council. So, Lieutenant.
Yeah, trying to share your screen here. Doesn't seem, oh, there we go. So just briefly, again, Carol, thank you for, for introducing this. Just a quick summary of, of the One Door program and what we're trying to accomplish. Is we're looking to provide some more comprehensive response to individuals who are in crisis and the families and connect those individuals to services in collaboration through, eventually through, through law enforcement countywide, initially here in Urbana. And what we're going to do is, once we get this moving, is an open single-door solution offering opportunity for individuals to be recognized, evaluated, stabilized, engaged, and treated with dignity and respect. And just very briefly here, in, in individuals who are in, in the moment crisis. Many of the individuals who the police department deal with don't have the, the access to the resources that are adequate enough to, to help get the individual stabilized. And that's what we're trying to do with the One Door. And what the One Door is going to provide is the, the crisis response team. If you follow the news much at all, that is, is the crisis response teams in law enforcement have been a growing trend. There's, there's a couple of different models for that here in Champaign County. And what we're going to pilot in Urbana will be a team that will respond independently from the police. So they won't be riding in a squad car. But when the call comes out, or when the officer requests a team member, that team member will respond to the scene and meet the officer there. And that's what, that's what we're going to pilot primarily within Urbana. Also, with that pilot will come follow-up services. The, and I'll, Joey, speak to this a little bit more, but the follow-up services will be for what the pilot team deals with. So it will not be a 24/7 pilot, but we're going to look at how the best to run this countywide. But they are going to look at all of our calls for service when it comes to somebody in mental health crisis and provide follow-up services with those individuals from the, the get-go and the pilot. And so as we've, we've moved forward, and, and again, as, as Carol said, there will be a more in-depth review and, and, where we're going and where we're at with this here in a couple of weeks. But I will tell you that we are moving forward very well. And what we've learned is that we, we need people, somebody who can run this day-to-day. It's becoming a full-time job trying to get this organizational policies and procedures and such put together. And so rather than try to divvy up all those tasks between the partners, Rose Krantz, when back to Carl, has assigned a, one of their senior fellows to be a project manager, she's doing a wonderful job, Lauren. And then Rose Krantz is going to hire a full-time director to help get this thing launched and to keep it running throughout the first year. And that's my summary.
Thank you, Joel. Zoom heavy. Bill Brown?
As far as physical locations go, it sounds like the See You At Home team would be the mobile team. And then if, if somebody needs, can you kind of go through a scenario so that we understand a little bit more about how it would work?
So the team will be based, it won't be a See You At Home team, it'll be a, it'll be a Rose Krantz team that will be based out of 70th, Washington. Joey, I'll let you talk to how that team's going to operate. And you're on mute, Joey?
And Joey, I don't know if you had called in on the phone that's separate, it doesn't look, you have? Okay, so I have unmuted you, and then what you want to do is just unmute your phone there. You can do that by pressing star six. Okay, now we should be able to hear you.
All right, good now? So the question was the initial follow-up services, Joel? Did I hear that correctly?
Where, if you could explain the, the, your team's going to be based in 70th, Washington. And just for the pilot portion of this, if you could explain how that's going to operate.
Yes, so for the pilot portion, what we'll initially start out doing is taking any referrals from Urbana PD that would come in the field where they would ask for assistance for crisis co-response. If the call were to come out, we would then would respond with Urbana PD, assess for any psychiatric crisis, and give a disposition of the next steps. With that, though, would also come follow-up services. So as Joel was saying in the initial pilot, there wouldn't be so much, some overnight coverage to begin holidays and weekends. But we would have a, a system with Urbana PD that if someone was involved with PD, needed mental health services, that we would connect, do follow-up care within 24 to 48 hours to make contact with a hope that there would be no more involvement with law enforcement within that timeframe.
And then, and then for the walk-in service, would that be at See You At Home on Washington Street, too?
Yes, walk-in would be at See You At Home. That service will probably be a couple of weeks behind the launch of the actual pilot. The intention is to start this in, well, now we're looking at the first of February because some logistical thing is on the law enforcement side. And that lands right smack dab at the beginning of one winter night for See You At Home. So we're not going to ask them to try and add staff and launch that right in the middle of their fundraiser. So they'll be a couple of weeks behind likely in getting the, the physical part of this open.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else have any questions? Mary Alice?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to make sure I understood you, Joey. So you said that you won't have staffing on the holidays or the weekends. Will you have staffings in the evenings?
Yes, the initial goal were to be to have staff up until seven o'clock. We're still in some conversation with that. We would have the One Door Director, who would be not only working on the actual program model for follow-up care and community collaboration, but actually two other staff, one in eight to four, another one 11 to seven, as we start this project and then analyze call, the call trends, missing gaps, things like that.
Okay, so initially, we're, we're going to go to 7:00 PM, and then we're going to also gather data at the same time and figure out the optimal amount of staffing at different air, at different times during the day, sounds like. Okay, I, I guess my, my next question, I mean, I understand it makes sense to hire somebody who can oversee this whole process in the next two weeks. Or are you going to come back with a presentation and tells us what the staffing level looks like? Specifically, I'm, I'm looking to the cost and what costs you're going to be requesting. Is that what we're going to see in the next two weeks?
Yes, and we're eager to post and start interviewing for this position. We haven't done that yet, but we're eager to do so. And then some of the other costs attached to this pilot would not be a cost that we'd be looking at for Urbana at this time. It would just be something we would kind of incorporate with our current structure for crisis services.
Okay, so at this time, you're asking Urbana to fund the director for it?
Yes, and not, and not only for the initial pilot for crisis co-response and follow-up care, but then to collaborate not only with See You At Home and Carl, our other partners, but then other community providers to see how we can link people involved with PD quicker to other services.
Thank you.
Charisse?
Um, I know that there are some people, you know, that are in crisis, that are homeless, but they don't want to necessarily be treated. How can we go, go about, you know, like, those mentally ill can decide to not have any help? How, how can we go about helping those people?
I would agree, Charisse, and I think that when you see a actual crisis, sometimes people will participate with intervention is not going to be 100%. It's not going to be, and then there's where we're missing out. So I think the piece that we're trying to hone on in our project is that follow-up piece. How do we attach ourselves after the call, after the crisis, and try to build rapport even afterwards, which I think is not happening now? That would be the initial attempt, you know, the day after, two days after, reaching out, building some rapport.
I, I just know that, you know, in, in my work there last year, that I had an issue where I, I was trying to, to help someone get services, but he was not, you know, cooperating. And there was no way, the police, what, what they would do is just ask him to move his car from one side to the other. That was the only way that they could actually engage him. And I, I was just wondering how one would go about, or how this program might be able to help someone with that kind of issue, so.
Or with our goal of trying to reduce the involuntaries to hospitals and police involvement, how to, how can the crisis response team maybe come in a different way and try to ease someone into taking services versus rushing it? I think that would be part of the, part of our project goal, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Jared? Yeah, um, oh, one question, I guess, is this entire hiring process going to be handled by Rose Krantz, Joey?
Correct, it would be a Rose Krantz employee with our HR policies, benefits, all that, yes.
Okay, um, in, as far as what we're expecting to see in two weeks, Joel, you know, I, I understand that there's at least four key stakeholders in this right now between Carl, Rose Krantz, the City of Urbana, via the UPD, and See You At Home. Is there, is that the primary working group for, for this? And as far as the program itself becoming, you know, more than just an idea and starting to take a little bit more shape, becoming anything, or, you know, who's making the decisions that are, that are really going to end up forming it? And do you envision that we're going to see some sort of IGA between us and the sheriff's office? Are we going to see something else? How does this get more formalized as it turns into a program? Because right now, it's kind of sounds like it's all getting put into Rose Krantz's hands for the most part. And I'm just interested where, where our role is, where the other roles are. Because there's a lot of people in the community who probably could contribute greatly to helping us come up with a really good process and idea for this. But it doesn't sound like we have a great many stakeholders outside of the ones that we know of right now.
So the, the, the process we're, we have right now is the partners meet every Thursday for about an hour and a half, two hours, and move things forward operationally. That's where the, the director comes in and the Carl's project manager, who's been putting this, organizing the meeting, making sure we're staying on track and getting the, the action items put together, moving things forward. I would imagine as, as this moves forward, you'll see a, a partner operational board of some form and fashion put together that will, will have the oversight of this. Right now, these are the only partners. The, the goal would be eventually to see OSF and other direct stakeholders come into this. But if you, if you start adding a lot of other voices, then you start going a lot of other different directions. And it, it needs to start off slow and grow and not try to do too much at one time.
I, sure, and I, I get that. I'm just worried about community collaboration, reaching out to people who
So-
or, you know, just in, in the streets of these folks all the time. Not that Rose Krantz doesn't have a direct interaction with the people in mental health crisis in our community. I certainly know that they do, and I've actively been involved in that with the people I know personally. So I know that there, that resource is, that's there. But, you know, we're, you know, we're talking about more than, more than just, you know, mental health treatment in, in a lot of cases. And that, you know, crisis, mental health crisis is so intertwined with so many things, especially in responses to police calls and so on and so forth. And I, you know, I've just, I, I feel, to be honest, very in the dark about what's going on. You know, it's like, we hear, we hear nothing for a long time, and then all of a sudden, you know, we're being asked to put forward 75 grand for a director of a program I know almost nothing about, that we've talked about once at a, at a council meeting. And even then, it was more in the abstract than anything else. And not that I'm by any means shunning that we're spending money or we're putting money towards something like this. I just, you know, it feels very, very much a, a lot like putting the cart before the horse in this, in this situation.
So Jared, the, this has been in discussion. This, the, the One Door actual project's been in discussion for well over a year. It is discussed pre-COVID every other month at, at a, a sit-down meeting with probably 30, 40 different stakeholders, providers and such throughout the county at the Champaign County Crisis and Emergency Steering Committee. So there's a lot of voices there who, who've added suggestions, thoughts, and, and ideas. This is also, I, I've said at, I don't even come up with a number. A, a large number of community organizations and stakeholders within, not just the mental health community, but other interested parties and, and discuss this. So there's been a lot of community voice that has helped shape this, but there's not been a formal organization put together to create this, if that helps understand any.
Okay, well, we just wanted to share, share those concerns as we're moving forward. You know, I, I like the idea of hearing that there would, at some point, be a board put together to kind of manage this. Because I really think it does need to be community managed and not just through one organization or even just a hand, small handful of- and not just through one organization, or even just a hand, small handful of organizations. It's got to have roots in our community with people who are on the streets dealing with these kinds of things all the time. Just wanted to show that thought.
And I like the second thought, too, Jared, is in no way for long-term does Rose Krantz want to own this, too. We have the same vision that you had just mentioned, that this is a community project. I think on the initial pilot, we're willing to take the first step forward. But yeah, this should not be owned long-term by Rose Krantz. I think in the initial, since we're the community county provider, it makes sense for us to make that first step. But we're very open to other numerous conversations to make this the best. Bill Brown.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Rose Krantz and Joel for getting this going. I think taking the first steps always hard, and getting, getting something going, so that you can at least see how it works and what demand is for it, is a big step. I think that we'll learn from that and be able to adjust, but you have to start somewhere. And I think, you know, getting it going will be, will be a great, a great first step. I know it's been a long time, and you can talk about it forever, and people can point to other plans in other cities that don't really have the same issues we have, or they have, you know, good weather all year round, so their homeless population is a different, a different challenge. So I think, you know, everything's, every place is a little bit different, and you guys working together and working with the community, I think will really, really help get in something off the ground. So I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to move Resolution Number 2020-12-067-R to City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Is that Charisse?
Yeah.
Okay. Before we go for vote, I actually have a question. Joel, the, the funding says it's coming from a police salary line. What exactly does that mean, from the money that's already been allocated to the Urbana Police Department? What is, I guess, not getting funded? Where's this money coming from?
I can answer that.
Yeah, thank you.
That's the money that the, that the council decided not to fund one of the police officer positions, and so it's coming from that salary line item that was not spent on a police officer.
Thank you, Carol. Any other discussion before we vote? No? Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good work. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, with that, that resolution passes and is going to full City Council with a recommendation for approval. Does anybody have any other business before we adjourn? Seeing none, and no further. Oh, Jared? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to take an opportunity to put forward an idea to council, Carol and Diane as well, since we're all here together, and we don't often get the chance to speak together, that we, I feel like, I'd really like to see a change, at least in our committee, the whole agendas, for something that is on a lot of other agendas for boards and commissions and political bodies called petitions communications, where there's an opportunity formally for council members to comment, to respond, to bring forth notice of community events, things that we think are worthwhile of noting to the public, because we don't really have the opportunity to do that, and the way our meetings are organized as of now, we kind of just go through the agenda, and either council members have got to specifically be chairs, and then they can put something on the agenda, or we've got to, you know, try and collaborate together with somebody, which doesn't always work out conveniently for the time, and it may not be for anything that needs, you know, an entire discussion item, they just may want to be, make the community aware of something, or maybe just want to, you know, bring, bring something forward. So I don't know, process that we need to go through to start considering adding something like that. I'm sure we need ordinance, if there's any assistance that could be provided from the city. I'm working on drafting something right now. I just want to give a heads up, in two weeks, for committee, the hold decides, maybe a couple of things I am going to try and bring an ordinance forward for that, and as soon as I have a draft ready, I'm planning on sending it to you guys. But I would really like to be able to add that to our agendas, make some rules for it, for us to be able to respond, communicate, talk to, and, you know, express things that we don't really have a place for in our current agendas. At the very least, the community, the whole, if not at both meetings.
Well, before we close, can I say something like, about that, Jared?
Of course. I'm not Jared.
I know, I know. Mr. Colebrook?
Yes, yeah, you can.
Okay. You can actually make any kind of an announcement or anything like that during public comment, and if you wanted to respond to anyone, you can do it at that time as well. That's the purpose of that being on the agenda at that time. You all have the ability to add anything to the agenda that you want, no matter what. But if you're talking about an opportunity to respond, when people are giving you information and you come up with an idea, you have a right during public input to do that as well. You can speak at that time as well. So, you know, I don't know if there needs to be any additional item added to the agenda for that particular thing, when, you know, you already have an opportunity to do so.
Jared?
Well, I mean, I guess that would go contrary to the words that are in our public input, which specifically says, this is not a time for the council to talk with the public. This is a time for us to hear the public, and we don't talk back to them. That's what it says in our public input thing. And I've always thought that you're, that it is the way that you've described, Phyllis, that we are supposed to have the opportunity to respond, so.
Mayor?
Traditionally, and actually, it's been practiced for as long as many of us have been on the council, that this was a time for listening. But I know what you're saying, and I've, I think the city of Champaign has the opportunity for council members at the end of the meeting to, to do exactly what you're saying. So it sounds like it would be, it would need, you'd need to change the agenda, you'd need to change the council rules for deliberation, and that would have to be, which you've made some modifications to that, I think, last year, that Charlie had proposed. So, so that would be the, you know, one way to go about doing that.
Dennis?
Yeah, I totally support that. I have things to share with the community, just as Jared does, and there's been a kind of a morphing of our public input to become silent listeners, and really, it doesn't encourage that many, you know, city council members to make comment at that time. So actually, I would appreciate having something added to the agenda for communications. And I wouldn't want it at the end of the meeting, when everybody's tired, and it's, you're going to communicate to nobody at, at 10 minutes to 11, if the city is, the city meeting is that long. So I would have it right after public input, and allow the other kinds of announcements and communications to be shared, which often will come from your ward or your constituents or yourself. So I appreciate that, Jared. I really appreciate that. That's a really good thing to add to the, to the agenda, and I would support that.
Any other comments? Okay, now, having seen no other business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.